And I open the call to order the regular meeting of Lakewood City Council of June 25th, 2012. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Murphy.
Here.
Paul.
Here.
Baraway.
Here.
King.
Here.
Allen.
Here.
Coop.
Here.
Kellen.
Here.
Royball.
Here.
Quinn.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Wickman.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I'd ask everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent prayer, and during that moment of silent prayer, I would ask everyone to consider the memory of the Denver police officer tragically killed in the line of duty just yesterday.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Well, good evening, everyone. As always, I'd like to welcome you and thank you for participating in your local government, either by choosing to come out and join us in council chambers tonight, or watching us at home, live on Channel 8, or video streamed on our website, also archived on our website. This is a large meeting. It's very warm out. I just checked the temperature, about 6:59. It's still 100 degrees in Lakewood. We've had folks on the roof, working with our air handlers, running water through it. It's not bad in here right now, but it could get a little close as the evening goes on. I've chosen to take my jacket off, getting a little grief from some of my colleagues, but it's warm. So we're gonna have, you know, it's gonna be a long evening. Anybody that knows me knows that the one thing I really insist on is a civilized dialogue and decorum in these council chambers. And I did take the opportunity to watch the tape of the planning commission meeting. That's exactly what occurred that evening, and I thank you all very much for that, and I'm sure it will be the same tonight. So, thank you in advance for that. Again, the atrium is an extension of the council chambers, so let's try to move out there, once we're full in here. There is a conference room down the hall. We call it our finance conference room. If there are any kids here tonight, parents need to take them and settle them down. I don't see any, but just know that that room is available. We would ask that the parents be with the kids, because there's no supervision there. And I think that's about it for this point in time. The first item on the agenda is public comment, and public comment is intended for items that are not on the regular agenda. Obviously, most if not all of you are here for item nine, which is ordinance number 0-2012-11. Is there anyone in chambers that wishes to make public comment on a non-agenda item? With that, I will close the public comment period. Next on the agenda is what we call the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda has been made to expedite council action. Tonight, it just contains first reading ordinances and some minutes of a past meeting. First reading ordinances appear on the agenda only for the purpose of setting future public hearing dates and ordering the newspaper publication of the proposed ordinance. Therefore, no public comment will be heard this evening on first reading ordinances. The public will have the opportunity to comment on the proposed ordinances during the scheduled public hearings on the dates set tonight by city council. Will the city clerk please read the items on the consent agenda into the record?
The consent agenda consists of items five through eight inclusive. Item five, ordinance 02012-12, an ordinance to rezone the property located at 7400, 7350, and 7340 West 26th Avenue, here on to be known as 7400 West 26th Avenue, from an existing PD to a new PD. Item six, ordinance 02012-13, amending chapter 14.09 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relating to the Lakewood Building Code to include adoption by reference of Appendix F, Radon Control Methods of the International Residential Code of the International Code Council, 2009 Edition, as amended. Item seven, ordinance 02012-14, authorizing a non-exclusive easement agreement to the Bancroft Clover Water and Sanitation District for an underground water line across Bon Bee Stanton Park. And item eight, approving the minutes of the regular city council meeting of June 11th, 2012.
Thank you. Would anybody wish to comment on the minutes of the city council meeting of June 11th? I will open the public comment opportunity for that. With that, public comment is closed, and I'm ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor Murphy, I move for approval of the council minutes for acceptance of the minutes of boards and commissions. Order all ordinances introduced on first reading to be published in the Denver Post, with public hearing set for the date included in the ordinance, all of which are included in the consent agenda items introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second the motion?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, please cast your votes. And the vote is 11 ayes, 0 nays. The next item is a rezoning hearing. There is a written sheet titled "Rezoning Hearing Procedures at City Council Meetings" on green paper, available at the table by the entrance to the city council chambers. For those of you who may be unfamiliar with the steps we follow in conducting the hearing, you are welcome to get a copy of this information at any time. All persons present should be advised that the city council has received and reviewed the written findings and recommendations of the planning commission in this matter. We also received a notice that the entire record is available for review by members of the city council. The city council must consider only the record before the planning commission, the written findings and recommendations of the planning commission, any previously filed written objections to those findings and recommendations, and the comments relating to them made during this heeding, this hearing. I got heat on my mind. It is not necessary, therefore, for the applicant, proponent, or any protestant to repeat any presentation, argument, or information given to the planning commission. Any person who wishes to speak will be limited to three minutes, and when you get down to the lectern here, there's a light system. It goes green, yellow, red, and it's green for the first two and a half minutes. When it turns yellow, you know you have 30 seconds left. When it turns red, we would ask you to conclude your comments. There is no seeding of time from one member to another. Everybody has three minutes. We will alternate, pro and con. I have, the lists were divided between pro and con. I will alternate. There was some discussion with one community member a couple of weeks back about possibly allowing two at one time. Nobody has talked to me since, so I'm not sure how I would pick out two members to achieve the kind of continuity this one community member was talking about. So, absent any further communication, we'll just go alternate unless somebody's got a better idea right now. So, we're gonna ask for the name and address of the speaker who attended, whether or not the speaker attended the planning commission meeting, and who, if anyone, the speaker represents. Will the city clerk please introduce item number nine, which is ordinance 02012-11?
Item nine, ordinance 02012-11, to rezone land located at 2090 South Wright Street, City of Lakewood, County of Jefferson, State of Colorado.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing on this item, and before we hear from the applicant and the staff presentation, and then public comment, we're gonna, as we always do, turn to our city attorney, Tim Cox, for some parameters and criteria regarding rezoning hearings in general, and some special items regarding this hearing in particular. Mr. Cox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Excuse me. Yeah, we've been in the habit in recent years of going through a couple of the factors you need to keep in mind as you hear a rezoning case, because they don't come along all that often. So, we'll start with a few things to remember that are applicable to all rezoning cases, and then touch on two items that are, if not unique, distinctive about this case. There are guidelines, of course. All of these are in the code, and they're addressed in the staff report, so I won't belabor the details. But first, with regard to what's supposed to happen at this hearing, and what the council may consider. It consists of the record that was before the planning commission, the written findings and recommendation of the planning commission, any previously filed written objections, and we'll get to that in just a moment, and of course, the testimony and evidence you hear tonight. That's what you're to consider. You may also hear any other written relevant oral statements in the case, so you have broad discretion to hear evidence. Obviously, you should avoid, we should avoid irrelevant evidence, and I'll talk in just a moment about what kinds of guidelines we can offer you there. At the end of that hearing, and this is true of every rezoning case, you have several options, four to be precise. You may adopt the planning commission findings and vote on the proposal. You may revise those findings if the evidence supports a revision based on a clerical error. You may remand the matter to the planning commission to review and change its findings if you find that the evidence supports that, or you may table the matter to a date certain. The standards that you must consider in deciding a rezoning are set forth in section 1717.7 of the code, and again, they're addressed in the staff report. But in summary fashion, we'll review that no application for zoning should be approved unless it is demonstrated that the proposal promotes the health, safety, and welfare of the inhabitants, and furthers the purposes of the zoning ordinance, that the proposal is compatible with surrounding uses, as evidenced by a conceptual site plan, that the proposal enhances the significant natural characteristics of the site, that the proposal complies with the performance-based review process, and again, staff will address that, and the proposal is either consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, or there's been a material change in the character of the neighborhood, such that a variation from the comprehensive plan is warranted. Those are the standards, and staff will address its findings on that basis, and as found by the planning commission. The planning commission is, in all cases, the fact-finding agency for rezoning cases. They've heard relevant statements and evidence from interested parties, and they've presented their written findings and recommendation. Those are the items we wanted to touch on with, one more reminder that we've raised in prior cases where it was specifically warranted. There are two items that we want to make sure you realize you should not consider, should not be part of your, the evidence that you consider. One is the ownership of the property in terms of the identity of the applicant, or the identity of who's going to develop the property. I'll take you back to a hearing a couple of years ago, when the question was, should a public housing project be approved? And there was a lot of testimony that night about whether that agency was good at what they do, whether there was support for those projects that they have done before, and there was opposition based on the fact that it was to be rental housing rather than owned units. It's true, even in a non-housing case, the identity of the applicant is not the issue before you. It's the land uses that are proposed for the site. So you should be looking at density. You should be looking at compatibility, the standards that we just talked about a moment ago. There's obviously an issue here regarding ownership that's a little bit different from what we have talked about in those past But getting back to the question of identity, there was extensive testimony at the planning commission regarding the need for a school at a new site, the background of the school, the quality of the school, and there was testimony from the opposition regarding the school's financial viability and the long-term future of this entity as being able to run the school at that location. Those issues are really not directly relevant to the land use questions before you. So I'd caution you to try to control the evidence, to give people an opportunity to be heard, but keep the focus as much as possible on the issues that you have to decide on this rezoning case. So that brings us to the two issues that are distinctive to this case. I referenced a few minutes ago, the idea of previously filed written objections. According to our Code 1717.5, there is the opportunity, after the planning commission hearing, for any person to file written objections to the findings and/or recommendation made by the planning commission, and there has been such a filing in this case. There was a timely filed written objection to certain of the findings of the planning commission. Per the code, once that filing is made, there's a determination of what parts of the transcript from the planning commission might be relevant to that discussion. In fact, the entire transcript is part of the record before you, and presumably, we'll hear from the representatives of the group that submitted the written objections tonight. The code does not provide any specific change in procedures when a written objection is filed. I take you back to the four options that you have at the conclusion of this hearing. One is to remand the matter to the planning commission if you find that the evidence shows that there was incorrect information that supported one or more of those findings. So, that will be the question before you, is to review those factual findings by the planning commission and decide whether to adopt them, revise them based on a clerical error, or remand the matter to the planning commission. But that is the extent of the guidance the code provides on what to do with the written objection, and the mayor is prepared to hear from those individuals at the appropriate time as well. Finally, the other unusual part about this application, somewhat unusual, is that there is also a legal protest that has been filed. Our charter, the city's Home Rule Charter at section 9.2, contemplates that the owners of a certain percentage of property within the immediate vicinity of the subject property may file a legal protest, and if enough signatures are submitted protesting the proposed rezoning, then it triggers a change in the voting requirement. In fact, it goes from a simple majority, which in this case would obviously be at least six votes, to a two-thirds majority, which is at least eight votes, and that's regardless of how many of you are here tonight. It's two-thirds of the entire council that's necessary. There's no change in the procedure based on the fact that legal protest has been filed, so when it comes time to vote, that will be a factor, but in the meantime, you just need to know that that has been recorded, that protest was actually filed prior to the planning commission hearing, but in accordance with the provisions of our code. So, those are the items we wanted to cover with you at this beginning stage. If there are questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Any questions from council on the criterion parameters of hearing a rezoning case? All right, with that, we'll move on. Is the applicant or legal representative present?
My name is Tim Reed. I'm the Director of Facility Planning for Jefferson County Public Schools. My address is 809 Quail Street, Building 4. It's in Lakewood, 80215. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for giving us the opportunity to present our case tonight.
Mayor, some folks can't. Would you mind?
If you could get closer to the microphone, Mr. Reed.
Is this better?
That is much better.
For our presentation tonight, we'll be going over our formal request for rezoning, why we chose to rezone to a 2R, the brief history of the Hutchinson-Green Mountain Village development, the 2090 South Wright Street property in general, ODP and deed language, the 2008 asset management plan that was published by Jefferson County Schools, open enrollment, traffic, and regional schools, the disposition of the sales proceeds, and some closing comments. I'm here to formally request that we rezone, or that you rezone the property of 2090 South Wright Street from a PD to a 2R, in accordance with Article 17 of the Lakewood zoning ordinance. One of the questions that's come up is why we chose to go to a 2R instead of modifying the original development plan. When we first began to entertain the possibility of doing this, we discussed an administrative modification to the ODP, which would simply take it, the ODP currently says the lot is designated for an elementary school, and administrative change would change it from a pre-K to a high school, which is what's being proposed on the site. We were told that the issue was far too complex to simply be done administratively. So then we reviewed the two options that were left, which would be a formal modification of the ODP, which would involve the process that we're going through right now with a review by the planning commission, and then ultimately to city council, or to actually change the 2R, the zoning from a PD to a 2R. We chose the 2R as the option, because we felt it was restrictive in its use, and it would show a, and it would establish some restrictions to the piece of property that don't exist under the original development plan. The original development plan had no comment relative to setbacks, relative to height limitations, and it even, it doesn't even define what the true area of the land is. If you revert, or if you go back to the development plan, it simply says it's a minimum of 10 acres. The 2R zoning recognizes schools or educational facilities as a permitted use. The 2R is also consistent with the neighborhood. Any property, or most properties, that are not a part of the either Green Mountain or the Hutchinson-Green Mountain Village PDs are zoned to R. Anything virtually north of Jewel and to the east is that zoning. So we felt that it would, it would be compatible to the neighborhood. And finally, it does remove the reversionary language that exists in the ODP, which is, which has come up quite Briefly, the Hutchinson-Green Mountain Village Development Plan was approved by the city in 1973. It's a 1,000-acre development. It was planned for 5,100 single and multifamily housing units. The ODP originally dedicated 53 acres for five school sites. We acquired the one, 2090 South Wright, in 1977, with a direct sale from the developer to Jefferson County Schools. The other site is the Rooney Ranch Elementary School, which is also in this area. The remaining 34 acres actually ended up being incorporated into the development. Specifically, the 2090 South Wright Street is currently a vacant lot. It's 10.3 acres. It's bordered by 26 acres of Lakewood open space on the north and the east sides, Bear Creek Village to the south, and South Wright Street on the west side. Green Mountain Incorporated sold us the property in December of 1977. The developer rough graded, or did overlot grading to the property, seeded it, and provided utilities that would service this area. We, in the course of our ownership over the past 35 years, have granted easements and maintained the property. City of Lakewood has expressed, both at the planning commission and in public hearings, that they do not own or have an interest in this piece of ground. The language, one of the paragraphs relates to this piece of property, is states that the ODP, or that a minimum of 10 acres will be donated to the City of Lakewood for benefit of Jefferson County School by the developer, and then upon our request, turned over to the school district. And if it doesn't, if we didn't act on it within eight years, it would revert back to the city. Our position on this has been that this piece of ground was sold directly to the school district by the developer. It never was acquired at all by the City of Lakewood. Therefore, there is no way it could revert to Lakewood if they never had it in the first place. I know this is a pretty simplistic way of looking at it, but if you just take the reversionary language literally, that's, you had to do step one before you could proceed to step two or step three. The other item that's in there, has been made reference in the deed, is that there's reservations, restrictions, easements, language in there as a, as kind of an aside. This language refers to prior conditions that are applied to the language. It could be rights of way as a part of the development, or even before that. It could have been easements that were in place before the developer acquired the property. Specific conditions, such as exclusions of water or mineral rights, or reversionary language is customary in the deed. We have 15 properties, schools, that have reversionary language in the deed itself. The property would revert back to either a city, the county, or in some cases, the heirs, successor, and assigns of the original owner, as long as, if we decide to give up from using that, that property as a school, or as for educational The 2008 manage, Asset Management Plan is this. This is the full book, of which you've seen two pages that deal with the 2090 Wright Street property. I can give you some facts on this, and the rest of it is probably gonna be speculation. From a factual standpoint, the people that were involved in this document no longer work for the school district. I mean, they've either retired or moved on. The, I have no record, nor am I aware of any record of conversations between the City of Lakewood and the representatives of Jefferson County Schools regarding any type of transfer of this property to Lakewood. Our board policy, which is DN, it was adopted actually 15 years ago, 1997, says only the Board of Education can determine property to be surplus. Before it can be offered as surplus, it must be approved by the board. On policy DN-R, DN-RR, adopted at the same time, states these conditions when it comes to transferring property to municipalities or other governmental or quasi-governmental entities. An MIA appraisal or market evaluation may be obtained. Offers from state agencies, political subdivisions, municipalities, or quasi-municipalities will be solicited. Political subdivisions, municipalities, or quasi municipal corporations within Jefferson County may be allowed a discount on the purchase price of the real property. The discount on the selling price will ordinarily not exceed a percentage determined by dividing the assessed value of the political subdivision by the assessed valuation of Jefferson County. The board will make the final determination on offers for purchase of real property. The Board of Education declared this piece of property as surplus in October of 2011. Up to that time, it was in our inventory of property holdings. There is mention of the reverter clause in the, in the document. This document is intended to be informative to the Board of Education, deals with all of our properties. And again, speculating, the only reason I could think it would be in there would be if we were having some discussions about divesting ourselves of that piece of ground. It would explain why we would not be talking to private individuals. Usually, only municipalities are willing to take on the reverter clauses. Talk for a minute about education today, because you're gonna hear issues about traffic, and about regional schools, things of that nature. You're gonna hear that the deaf school is a regional school. Well, the reality of it is, in today's educational environment, just because a school is in a neighborhood doesn't make it a neighborhood school. Colorado law allows any student anywhere in the state to attend any school, as long as there's room in it, and they can get there. The combined enrollment of Dunston, Deviney, and Hutchinson Schools is 1,257 students. The boundaries contain 1,222 students. 457 of those 457 of those students, or 37 percent, attend other schools or charters outside of the boundaries. 490 students, or 39 percent, come from other in district or out of district locations. Choice enrollment has a significant impact on neighborhoods, on neighborhood schools, on the traffic patterns in neighborhoods. In addition, even our inboundery parents, for safety reasons, or scheduling, or transportation fees, take their kids to school via automobile. This is a drainage, this is from our drainage study, which kind of shows the proposed footprint of the building, where the parking is, detention, the playfield. Along the north edge, you can see, the dotted lines represent existing contours. There's also an existing roadway that goes to a pump house, or something that's owned by Green Mountain Water and Sanitary. The, to the right, or, one of the things that we chose to do was to try to limit the penetration into the neighborhood of the, of the traffic and the parking. So the entry to the site is to the north. Again, allowing that natural buffer to the north, positioning the building pretty much in the center of the site, and then with the detention pond and water quality ponds located on the east side. The field, which is in the southwest corner, is strictly a playfield. It's not competition, there's no lights, it's simply for the kids to play on. It also serves as a buffer to the properties to the south. And the, you can see the natural, we have a drainage, the Ward Canal Drainage Ditch that is in the lower, the southeast corner, that's been left alone, as well as a lot of the natural grades along the south and east edges. This is a site, east-west site section. Can see that we've terraced the site. The, the bold dash line at the top is the maximum zoning height allowed by the two R zoning. Could see the building itself is substantially below that. The, we've also maintained the parking lower, as well as the, the building and the detention areas to preserve the views of the neighbors. So we don't really believe that the neighbors will be impacted by the views from South Wright Street. The, the house that's on the left is 12519 West Warren, and that's, just as a, as an example of both in scale and, and height, what we would be looking at. Where will the proceeds of the land sale go? Will go to capital renewal in these locations. Will serve the Green Mountain, what we call the Green Mountain Articulation Area, which includes Green Mountain High School, Dunston Middle School, Deviney, Hutchinson, and Rooney Ranch Schools. So all of the proceeds that we would receive from this sale goes into our capital fund, and that, those funds will go towards these, towards these buildings. We've stated this both in public meetings and at the Planning Commission. Just some closing comments. Rocky Mountain Deaf School is a charter of the Jeffco Schools. They have their own board, their own management structure, their own teaching methods. We will provide no funding for this project. We will not be involved in the design or the construction process. The sale price has not been determined, and there's been two appraisals that have been You may hear that, you know, the school district is in the developer business, or the land speculator business, or something like that, and I assure you that we are in the education business. That's what we do. And we feel that our mission is to provide a quality education that prepares all children for a successful future. By your allowing this zoning to go through, you will be helping to advance that mission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Staff present, excuse me?
We have some additional presentation from the applicant.
Okay.
Representatives.
All right, sorry.
Hello, Mayor Murphy and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. I know that you have seen my presentation through the Planning Commission meeting, so I just wanted to highlight a few points. And we also have our architects here tonight, and a member of our building team, who will be presenting briefly on some new information. So I'll, I will just be highlighting some of the, some things about our school. As Tim said, we are a charter school in Jeffco, and we were founded by parents and deaf community members. We currently have 60 students, pre-K through 10th grade. We are building our high school. We just got approved for our high school a couple of years ago, so we will be filling that high school in a new school. We provide a rigorous bilingual educational program for deaf and hard of hearing students, and we are a unique program. It's the only program of its kind in the Denver metro area. We're high performing, innovative, and a national model for deaf education. We have highly educated staff. All of our teachers have master's degrees in deaf education. Unfortunately, despite the fact that our program is good, our facilities have not been. And we have been renting a variety of facilities, and have moved four times in the past 14 years. We're currently in a strip mall location that has health and safety issues, which is one of the reasons we got this grant. We proposed and received the BEST Grant Building Excellence Schools Today funding. It was a highly competitive process about this time last year. We were ranked third of all the applications that were submitted. And we were able to receive appropriate matching funds that were necessary for this grant as well. We received funds from the Betra Foundation, the Gates Family Foundation, and the Ann Schutz Foundation, in order to provide our matching funds. The BEST Grant funding is, does not use tax dollars. It comes from state land trusts, the Colorado Lottery, the matching funds that the various applicants provide, and also interest from the Assistance Fund. The goal of the BEST program is to provide a first-class, high-performing, 21st century facility, to help alleviate the health and safety concerns throughout Colorado. We're happy to bring a program like this to the City of Lakewood. Our plans are to build a one-story, 46,000 square foot LEED certified building, that's specifically designed for deaf and hard of hearing students. What is specifically designed for deaf and hard of hearing students? Technology alerts, for example, that are visual, safety, and unique educational strategies. We also need appropriate lighting and a visual, appropriate visual learning environment, and also unique instructional support spaces, such as for speech therapy, A S L labs, things like that. Our plans are to include sports fields and a full-size gym. The property that we have chosen is 2090 Wright Street, which is, as you've heard, 10-acre parcel. We feel that it's optimal for our new school. The topography of the land allows for the construction of a school as proposed, as we proposed it in the BEST grant. The dead-end street is ideal for the safety of our student population. As is required, we hosted neighborhood meetings. We first met with the Neighborhood Association to the south of the property, and then we hosted two neighborhood meetings. We also met with a small focus group from the 2090 Coalition, and we met with individuals from the neighborhood, who have been interested in working with us and providing us with some feedback. We also are committed to having a neighbor on our advisory group, and also a long-term commitment to be good neighbors. There's been a lot of interest in this project, so I just want to make sure that I set the facts straight. We are planning to build a one-story building. There are no plans for residential facility. We have received a grant which specifies the building size, and the building size therefore informs the capacity of the building to 100 students. And we are very pleased that the school is on the dead-end street. We have no intention of making Wright Street a through street. I'd now like to turn it over to David Pfeifer with Anderson Mason Dale.
Mr. Mayor, council members, again, my name is David Pfeifer. I'm with the architectural firm of Anderson Mason Dale Architects in Denver. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. I'm going to augment a few items in the materials that you've already received. Specifically, I'm going to speak to the criteria that are the standards for zoning and rezoning, of which, with which I'm sure you're very familiar, and specifically, I'm going to focus on two of them. The first, A, promotes the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city, and then I'm going to focus on criteria D, which speaks to the performance-based review process, and just mention a few things. Regarding the health, safety, and welfare criteria, I'd like to say that specifically as a part of our process and some of our public outreach to date, we are, the, the graphic that you see indicates an added access point onto the site. I think there was, early on, there was some concern expressed about emergency responders being able to get onto the site and, and off of the site, and so we've taken that into I would also like to, to note that as a result of specifically the performance-based review, calls upon the applicants to reach out to neighborhood stakeholders, and there are three ways in which we've specifically modified the proposal to date, and this is a very conceptual proposal, I should reiterate, but specifically, the building, the school, the proposed school building has moved to the east, further back from South Wright Street. The parking areas have been reconfigured, and the playing fields have been relocated as a part of our feedback process. And so we think that those, those three changes that have simply occurred to date at this very conceptual phase have been very, very helpful. Specifically, I wanted to add a couple of comments regarding the elements that we're asked to, to study and to identify or focus on as a part of the performance-based review process. The first element, one, regarding the regional context, Nancy spoke to this. Secondly, element two, conformance with a comprehensive master plan. I believe Evelyn Baker this evening is going to augment some of the information you've received. Element three, environmental sustainability. I'd like to note a couple of things. I believe that the project does respect the wildlife habitat and movement corridors in its location. The project, as Nancy mentioned, will be a LEED certified project. The building is, is being set into the grade in a, in a manner that is going to help preserve views, and an access trail along the northern side of the site is going to be maintained in the completed project. Under element four, infrastructure, there are adequate public services available on the site, and we can meet all of the City of Lakewood requirements for, for the various civil infrastructure issues. Under element five, transportation connections, I'd like you all to simply note that we will be providing new detached sidewalks with tree lawns, and we will also be providing an access trail along the northern edge of the site. Element six, building design and function. I'd like to, to reiterate here, to note this evening, that this facility will be a unique model for deaf day school education. Our team includes nationally recognized planners, who are the authors of deaf, what is called the Deaf Spaces Initiative at Gallaudet University in Washington, DC. I also want you to note that, that we will develop an aesthetically beautiful, functionally elegant, and programmatically unique facility for deaf education, of which the citizens of Lakewood may be very proud, will be very proud. Under site design and function, we will beautify the landscape with greenery and native plants, plant species. The site design will promote high-quality design development over time. It does respect the topography. It is set back from Wright Street, as I mentioned, and, and that has grown over the engagement process. And it is set back from the residential properties to the south. Under element eight, community image and identity, the facility will provide for an important educational facility for a population that is currently underserved by developing a local educational center for excellence in Lakewood. We believe that this helps to celebrate the cultures and diversity that exist within the community. And finally, under community sustainability, I'd like to say that we believe that we're providing educational and recreational opportunities to meet the needs of all young people, and the immediately adjacent community, and to help ensure the long-term vitality of the broader Lakewood community. Having said that, thank you very much for your time. I'm going to turn it over to Troy Talbert.
Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer.
Good eve, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor Murphy and City Council Members. My name is Troy Talbert. I'm a member of the Rocky Mountain Deaf School Building Committee, responsible for the land selection process. I'm a, I'm a, I'm also a parent of, my daughter goes to the school. I'm a commercial lender, and I have my Colorado real estate license. I'm intimately involved in the, in the school and land selection process, as I had mentioned. In regards to the land selection process, it was based on a number of different criteria: location, price, size, access, existing infrastructure and zoning. From a location standpoint, it's important to note that our M D S, Rocky Mountain Deaf School, has been in Lakewood for approximately eight of the 14 years that it has been in operation. First at the Green Mountain Christian Church off of West Exposition, and then at, at the Victory Outreach Church on South Kipling. So Lakewood was a natural choice for us. And should be pointed out that we also have teachers that live in the, in the city, and we have students that live in the city. In addition to the objective criteria that we had to follow, a more important goal for us was to find a property that would be safe, inviting, and conducive to the learning of our students. We analyzed over 100 potential sites, and it has been an arduous process, and it continues to be. When you look around Lakewood and Jefferson County, there appears to be plenty of choices. But when you funnel all of the criteria down, the, the choices become very limited. And the truth is, we could have looked at 1,000 different sites, and none of them would have fit our criteria and goals more than the 2090 South Wright Street property does. It's in Lakewood, a place we've called home for many years. Zoning for a school has been for 35 years. Utilities stubbed to the site with a street, Wright Street, built to handle more, more capacity than, that will bring down it. Access is good, pardon me, access is good from Kipling, Jewel, Union, and other roads in the area. Most importantly, it fits the environment conducive to the education of the students. The surrounding neighborhood allows for students to potentially live in the same neighborhood that their school is located. A good central location for our student population that minimizes transportation times for the students. And it has sufficient space. It'll allow us to finally have sports, sports fields. Basically, it fits 100% of our criterion. The great thing about 2090 Wright Street, that not only does it fit our criteria, it also fits the goals and criteria of the city and its comprehensive plan. As you know, the comprehensive plan has specific goals, policies, codes, that each rezoning request must comply with. A primary one requires that the proposed rezoning promotes the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of Lakewood. The staff report that will be presented sufficiently confirms that this, that it does comply with this code. I'd also like to point out, based on this health and safety issues, is that the school will also provide a school zone that will slow down traffic in the area. There will be additional security in the area. Our M D S currently has a specific sheriff that is, that is at, that, the teachers have the number of this, of this sheriff. number of this, of this sheriff, basically if things arise. None of these safety issues currently exist. A direct correlation with the goal of our MDS is that we were awarded the best grant based on health and safety concerns. Nancy touched on this. But at our current, at our current location, we've had a fire issue, we've had severe water damage, and we have questionable neighbors, neighboring tenants. Another goal of the comprehensive plan is to expand educational resources to provide equal opportunity to all segments of the community. As a parent of a deaf child, I can tell you the options are limited. Other options include Colorado, Colorado School for the Deaf and Blind down in Colorado Springs, or outside, out-of-state school programs, both of which would obviously require me and my family to move from a city that we love. Our MDS has a unique learning environment that is definitely, that definitely expands the opportunities of its students and has allowed my daughter to flourish. Another goal of the, another goal of the comprehensive plan is to provide continued access to public facilities and the opportunity for all persons to participate in the cultural life of the community. A school of our nature offers many opportunities for deaf people to participate in the community. Activities of the student, of the school include a fall and spring festival, annual Thanksgiving dinner, sporting events, and graduation ceremonies. Our school would also benefit, be a benefit to the neighborhood. There would be open and maintained athletic fields where basically weeds grow right now. The school also conducts American Sign Language classes. That would be a natural, would be a cultural benefit to the community and surrounding neighborhoods. While many more goals of the comprehensive plan are met with our school, the last one I'd like to mention is, is that rezoning requests should support the Lakewood City Center as a focal point for Lakewood's identity and activities. In May of this year, our MDS, Rocky Mountain Deaf School, and the deaf community put on the play Snow White and the Seven Dwarfs right next door at the Lakewood Cultural Center. And they look forward to many more such events in the future. Our students will also be able to enjoy the wonderful plays and arts, art shows that this center has to offer. As you can see, there is a natural fit for our school in Lakewood at this site. Our goal for a beautiful, safe home for our children fits completely with the goals of the city's comprehensive plan. What is good for the city, what is good for the school, is good for the city and its goals. I respectfully ask that you please approve the request for the rezoning of 2090 South Wright Street. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Is the applicant finished? All right. Staff presentation, Ms. Baker.
Good evening, Mayor Murphy and members of the City Council. I'm Evelyn Baker with the Planning Development Assistance Division, and I am here to provide the staff report for the case before you this evening, RZ 12002, the 2090 South Wright Street rezoning. Before we begin, I'd like to enter into the record the staff report, the complete case file, the public testimony to be provided this evening, the municipal code, including the zoning ordinance, and the comprehensive plan, including all of its amendments, as well of all, as well as all of the studies referenced in the staff report.
They'll be received. Thank you.
Thank you. As you've already heard tonight, the proposal before you this evening is a request to rezone the property at 2090 South Wright Street from PD, Plan Development, to 2R Small Lot Residential. This rezoning request is being requested to allow for a school serving pre-K to grade 12. And as you know, the applicant is Jefferson County Public School District R1, and the proposal is if the rezoning were to be approved, Jeffco School District would then sell the property to Rocky Mountain Deaf School, a Jeffco School Charter. The Rocky Mountain Deaf School, again, is proposing to construct a school to accommodate up to 100 students at full enrollment. The Lakewood zoning ordinance defines the process required to consider rezoning requests. Before a formal application can be submitted, the applicant must submit a pre-planning application, and this provides staff the opportunity to provide the applicant with some preliminary feedback regarding the preliminary proposal. As part of the pre-planning process, the applicant is also required to hold one neighborhood meeting. The purpose of that neighborhood meeting is to introduce the concept to the area stakeholders and interested members of the public, and to solicit feedback to begin a dialogue with those interested members of the public. Once the pre-planning application is complete, then the applicant may submit a formal planning application. That formal application is forwarded to outside agencies, utility districts, other governmental agencies and the like, and is also reviewed in detail by city staff for compliance with all applicable city standards. A staff report is then prepared, summarizing the review findings, and the staff report, along with staff's recommendation, is forwarded to the Planning Commission and a public hearing is held. The Planning Commission held the required public hearing on May 16th, and at that meeting, the commission voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve the rezoning request before you this evening. After the Planning Commission public hearing, the staff report, Planning Commission recommendation meeting minutes were forwarded to the City Council, and that's where we are this evening. This evening, you, the City Council, will consider the material provided, along with any additional public testimony, and will vote to deny, approve, or approve with conditions the rezoning request. As noted in the staff report, because the city has received a legal protest related to this request, a favorable vote of two-thirds is required to approve this zoning. The staff report and recommendation that are provided by staff are based only on an analysis of the proposal against all relevant city standards. A recommendation for approval can be made only after a technical review of the proposal confirms that the proposed rezoning meets all of the required city standards. Should not be interpreted as a dismissal of the neighborhood comments, and indeed, these neighborhood concerns have been addressed in detail in both the staff report and the previous Planning Commission public hearing. As you know, the zoning ordinance requires that notices of public hearing be provided two weeks prior to any public meeting. Those notices are mailed, there's a notice posted on-site at the Civic Center, there's also a newspaper notice that's published. I want to assure you that all of those public noticing requirements have been met for this rezoning case this evening. So, some background information about the actual site and the proposal. The project site at 2090 South Wright Street, as you've heard, is a 10-acre vacant parcel. It's located south of the intersection of Jewel and South Wright Street in Ward Four of the City of Lakewood in the Green Mountain neighborhood. It's located within an established, single-family neighborhood that was developed in the 70s and the 80s. To the south of the site, you can see the red dash line there, that's the city boundaries. To the south of the site, there is the unincorporated Jefferson County. As I mentioned, the site is currently vacant. It's classified as non-native grassland in this, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ward Five. Did I say Ward Four? My apologies, Ward Five. I thought I had five minutes left to speak. I wasn't sure what that was. So, the site is currently vacant. It's non-native grassland. The site slopes down from west to east and is bordered directly to the north and the east by Hutchinson Park Open Space. Let's take a quick look at some of the current land use patterns in the surrounding area. The site is shown here in white, that's a vacant, as vacant land. In the immediate area, there are large swaths of open, City of Lakewood open space. Just south of the project site in the unincorporated area of Jefferson County, there's actually a golf course. But the predominant land use in this area of town is a single-family residential homes, both within the City of Lakewood and actually south of the site in the unincorporated Jefferson County area. There are some school sites existing, a church, water district land, relatively smaller multifamily housing development, and some commercial retail uses as well. The project site in the adjacent residential neighborhood, an open space, is zoned PD and is governed by the Hutchinson Green Mountain Village Official Development Plan. The neighborhood north of Jewel, as you can see here in the yellow on the slide, is zoned Small Lot Residential 2R. And then there's a, some of the green there is the R1A Residential 1-acre, and that's the zoning for some of the open space just north of Jewel. Because this is a rezoning request, it's important to compare the existing zoning standards against the zoning standards proposed. In terms of land uses, the site is currently zoned for an elementary K through six school. The only other type of land use envisioned in the ODP for this site would be municipal uses. The surrounding neighborhood is zoned only for single-family residential uses. The proposed rezoning to 2R would allow for a range of uses that have been determined to be appropriate and for other similar, smaller lot, single-family residential neighborhoods across the city. Other examples of uses include, so, single-family residential homes is the primary use. Other types of uses would be public parks, general schools, pre-K through 12, churches, religious institutions, religious buildings. No commercial businesses, just to be clear, no restaurants, no retail uses would be permitted within the 2R Zone District. In addition, no dormitories, student dormitories would not be allowed in the 2R Zone District. At the Planning Commission meeting, the first column of this chart included only the elementary school use that was identified in the ODP for the site under the ownership of the school district. The information on this slide has been amended to also include municipal use that was called out in the ODP in the event that the site, the ownership of the land was transferred to the city. And the next few slides will look at a few examples of uses that generally fall in that municipal use category. It is a very broad category that can include things like parks and open space, but it also includes other important community municipal uses, including community or recreational buildings. Some of you recognize some of the photos in the slide there. These are some of the buildings that we have here in Lakewood, community, childcare centers, recreation centers, and the like, as well as other important municipal functions, including maintenance and recycling centers and public safety buildings as well. Going back to our comparison of existing zoning and the proposed zoning. While the proposed rezoning to 2R would include development standards which closely mirror the residential development standards in place for the surrounding neighborhood, this rezoning is being requested to allow for the development of the site for a charter school. And moving forward, we will take a look at the conceptual site plan for, for the proposed school. In terms of building heights and setbacks, no standards actually currently, currently exist for the site for its use as either a school or a municipal use. There are no maximum building heights or setback, minimum setback requirements outlined in the existing zoning document. This proposal would establish standards for building height and setbacks that are in fact similar to the standards in place for the surrounding neighborhood. With any rezoning request, the applicant is required to provide a conceptual site plan to illustrate how the proposed development of the site would perform against the standards that we just took a look at. The conceptual site plan provided for the request is included in the staff report and a detail of that conceptual site plan is shown here. Where's my mouse? Here's my mouse. The 46,000, there we go, the 46,000 square foot school building is shown to be set back, it's located here, it's shown to be set back from South Wright Street approximately 260 feet and approximately 90 feet from the adjacent, lost my mouse, adjacent residential properties to the south. Access to the adjacent open space, here's that Hutchinson Open Space, Hutchinson Park here. Access is proposed to be provided along the north, north side of the property. There is currently access along that, in that general area today. Access to the primary parking lot is shown here in this version of the conceptual site plan. Again, the intent here is to limit the amount of traffic that comes down further into the neighborhood, providing access at the northern portion of the site to the parking lot. And as you have heard previously, there is a playing field that's proposed here on the southern portion of the site, and that, again, is an unlit playing, playing field. As you well know, there's been a great deal of public interest in this rezoning request. I believe the staff report with the attachments, including the written comments from the public, weighed in at just over 1,000 pages. It's important to spend some time reviewing the neighborhood concerns that have been raised regarding this proposal. As I've mentioned previously, the zoning ordinance requires just one neighborhood meeting, but due to the amount of interest that we gauged for this project early on, we did require that the applicant hold at least one other neighborhood meeting. Both meetings were very well attended and there was a good amount of interest from folks, both in support and in opposition to the proposed rezoning. At the neighborhood meetings, and then through the public comment, we've identified five major concerns or issues to be addressed and analyzed further, and they're summarized here in this, in this slide, also covered in more detail in your staff report, and I'll touch on some of these quickly this evening. The first major question, as you've heard, had to do with the ownership of the site. Neighborhoods have, neighborhood, I'm sorry, neighbors have asked whether the district can proceed with this application based on the unusual history, title history of the site. Because questions of ownership are more of a legal issue that fall outside those issues typically analyzed as part of a rezoning request, planning staff has worked closely with the city attorney's office to address this question. In turn, the city attorney's office consulted with David Powell, a real estate attorney, for additional expertise in this subject matter, and a memo from Mr. Powell was provided in your packet. For some background information, as I've mentioned, the site is zoned PD, it's regulated by the Hutchinsons Green Mountain Village Official Development Plan, and it's called out as Area A3, shown here with the red circle. Now, the language for the land use for Area A3 specified that a 10-acre site would be donated to the City of Lakewood for the benefit of the school district for elementary school purposes. If the site was not used for such purpose within eight years of approval, the ODP stated the land shall revert back to the City of Lakewood for municipal purpose. So we all have that common understanding in terms of background information. So that's what was called for. This is what happened. Instead of deeding the land to the city to in turn deed the land to the school district, the developer instead transferred the land directly to the school district in 1977. Again, the land was transferred directly to the school district. One other piece of information, within the deed conveying the land from the developer to the school district, there's a language that states that the land is conveyed, quote, "with all its," oh, I've never said this word out loud, actually, "appurtenances." I've written it many times, but I've never said it out loud. "And warrants the title to the same, subject to reservations, restrictions, easements, and rights away of record." Again, in the staff report, there's more detailed analysis of this issue, but I want to hit on a summary of the legal staff's analysis of this point. First, the ODP is a set of zoning regulations. It's not a deed that conveys title to property. Second, the boilerplate language in the deed regarding the existing encumbrances of record relates to the limitation on the warranties provided with that deed, not the conveyance of land. Third, the city, since the city never owned the land, the land cannot revert back to the city. Based on the legal advice obtained on this issue, the city has a high degree of confidence that the district is indeed the legal owner of the subject property and may submit an application to rezone the subject property. Tim Cox, Lakewood City Attorney, is prepared to answer any follow-up questions you may have regarding this ownership issue. Moving forward to the second, second concern identified by the neighborhood stakeholders, excuse me. Neighborhood stakeholders express concern regarding the loss of what had been perceived to be open space in their neighborhood. Many neighborhood residents have indicated that the availability of open space in the neighborhood was a significant factor in their decisions to buy home here, homes here. One of the questions, then, is if the development of the site will unfairly reduce the amount of open space available to the neighborhood. While the 10-acre site is not dedicated open space opened by the city, but is instead a vacant undeveloped parcel, it is adjacent to a 26.7-acre parcel land that is owned by the city and is open space. Because the project site had never been fenced off or delineated in any other way from the adjacent open space, over the last 30 years or so, neighborhood residents have enjoyed both parcels as one contiguous area of what was thought to be open space. Further contributing to this perception that the project was open space is the fact that at some point over the years, signage reading City of Lakewood Open Space, No Motorized Vehicles was posted mistakenly, mistakenly posted on the district property and not on the adjacent open space parcel. The city does not currently have a system for tracking signage within its more than 5,500 acres of open space, and parks crews are able to place and remove signs without supervisory approval. Community Resources has acknowledged that this issue has highlighted the need for a better tracking system. However, based on anecdotal information, city staff understands that a parks crew member likely responded to complaints about off-road motor vehicles in this area and drove out to the site. and drove out to the site, seeing no discernible property boundaries in the field, placed the sign on the school district's ten-acre property instead of on the city's adjacent twenty-seven acre, twenty-seven acre open space property. The placement of this sign was brought to our attention as a result of this rezoning request, and once we discovered the sign was placed in the wrong location, the sign was removed. In two thousand and ten, the city prepared an analysis of open space parkland in the city's five council wards. While the project site is located in Ward Five, the neighborhood with easiest access to the nearby open space is located in Ward Four. Across the city, the report found that the average number of acres of city-owned open space per one thousand residents was three-point-one-two acres. Within Ward Four, this number was seven-point-seven-five acres, and within Ward Five, this number was four-point-seven-four acres. Note that these figures do not include that ten-acre site, which was acknowledged as being outside of the city's portfolio of parkland. In summary, then, the neighborhoods in Wards Four and Five are both currently well-served with abundant open space and will continue to be so. Another concern expressed by neighborhood stakeholders relates to traffic. The next question city staff examined was, can the existing road network accommodate the increase in traffic associated with the rezoning in the new Rocky Mountain deaf During the pre-planning application review, the city traffic engineering manager determined that no formal traffic study would be required for this rezoning request, primarily because the existing road system had been designed and constructed to accommodate traffic associated with the residential neighborhood and the possible elementary school of the site. Nonetheless, the applicant had a traffic evaluation prepared to better inform the discussion related to traffic safety issues. Note that the evaluation prepared was not a full traffic study. As I mentioned just a moment ago, the city traffic engineering manager had determined that no formal traffic study would be required for this rezoning request. Therefore, the traffic evaluation that was prepared did not meet, nor was it required to meet, the standards for a formal traffic study as outlined in the city's traffic engineering design standards. The evaluation was prepared by a local traffic engineering firm and was reviewed by the city traffic engineering manager, who verified that the analysis was sound. This evaluation confirmed that the existing public street system is more than adequate to absorb the additional traffic. When Wright Street was constructed, it was designed as a collector street to accommodate up to seven thousand vehicles per day. When Bear Creek Village neighborhood was built in nineteen ninety-four, the connection from this neighborhood to Bear Creek Valley, Bear Creek Village was not constructed along South Wright Street. That was constructed as, maintained as a dead-end street. The city then updated South Wright Street's, uh, street classification to a local street, which is instead of designed, intended to accommodate up to seven thousand, is intended to accommodate up to two thousand five hundred vehicle trips per day. The two thousand and twelve traffic count showed that South Wright Street currently accommodates an average of four hundred and eighty vehicles per day, and the charter school, designed to accommodate up to a hundred students at full enrollment, is anticipated to add an additional two hundred and forty-eight trips per day. Note that these estimates are based on the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and that's the industry standard used to, for such purposes. The result would then be approximately seven hundred and twenty-eight trips per day at full enrollment, and this graph shows the number of trips compared to the capacity of South Wright Street as constructed as a collector and as designated as a local street. Using these conservative numbers associated with the local street, you can see that the street would be at only twenty-nine percent capacity. After analyzing the projected traffic impacts, then, the existing road network can accommodate the anticipated increase in traffic. One final note about streets before we move on, the applicant has not proposed, the city will not require that South Wright Street be modified to become a through street. There's been a number of questions from the public on this, and I want to be clear, they're not proposing it, we're not requiring it, that's not what's being considered today. The only street improvements, as you've heard, are the sidewalk and tree lawn improvements provided in front of the site, and those will be paid for by the applicant, not by the city. Neighborhood residents have commented that the area is habitat to a variety of wildlife and have expressed concern about that the rezoning and subsequent development of the site would diminish, uh, unreasonably diminish important wildlife habitat. In two thousand and seven, the city commissioned an environmental and ecosystem report to get a better understanding of the potential urban wildlife use of the city's parkland and open space, and also to develop a prioritized list of sites for acquisition for wildlife uses. The project site, you can see here, was identified as being non-native grassland, and the adjacent parkland Hutchinson Park area was identified as riparian habitat. The analysis did acknowledge the site was, and the adjacent Hutchinson Park, were part of a wildlife corridor of relatively good connectivity between William Frederick Hayden Park and Bear Creek Lake Park. Ultimately, the report, however, ranked the ten-acre site as only a medium priority for acquisition because there is already connectivity and a large open space at this location. In addition, staff consulted with Colorado State Parks and Wildlife, which indicated that the state had no concerns regarding the proposed rezoning and the development of the site. District Wildlife Manager further noted that the conceptual site plan appeared to be appropriate in that the area of the development had been kept out of the drainage area and the tree line where the animals were most likely to pass through. The proposed rezoning and subsequent development, then, are not expected to unreasonably diminish key habitat and wildlife because of the proximity to adjacent habitat and wildlife movement corridors, and because the development will minimize changes to a large portion of the site to allow for continued usage of the site for wildlife habitat. We've analyzed the primary concerns raised by neighborhood stakeholders. In addition, at the public hearing on May sixteenth, the planning commission had questions regarding the request to rezone to a straight zone district as opposed to simply modifying the official development plan, given that the two R zone district does allow for not only schools and single-family residential uses, but a range of other uses as well. The question was generally this, are the range of uses that would be permitted under the two R zone district appropriate? Staff provided some additional written information addressing this issue in the request for council action that was provided for your review. I'd like to summarize that information here as well. While the request to rezone the property to two R zone district is being made to allow for a pre-K twelve school, and no other uses of the project site are anticipated or contemplated at this time, the two R zone district does allow for a total of sixteen permitted uses. Typically, single-family residential neighborhoods are comprised mainly of single-family homes, as you would expect, but they also include other supportive uses, including appropriate public and institutional services and facilities like schools, parks, recreational uses, religious institutions, and transportation infrastructure. Each of the residential zone districts within the City of Lakewood allows these types of uses to be a part of residential neighborhoods. Restricting these neighborhood uses on a particular site or within a particular neighborhood creates neighborhoods without the local services it needs and unfairly shifts the need to provide these important services to other areas of the city. It's not the policy of the city in general to exclude traditional neighborhoods serving uses from neighborhood zones, even in planned developments. One final note, sort of a tangential note related to this point, all single-family residential zone districts in Lakewood permit K through twelve schools by right. There's no distinction in any residential zone district between a private or a public or a charter school, for that matter, nor by curriculum type. All K through twelve schools are regulated in the same manner. There's no zone district set aside for what might be considered to be a school with a regional draw versus that with a neighborhood draw, and as you've heard from the applicant, with the school choice option in place, it's common for schools located within neighborhoods to attract students from outside of the immediate neighborhood. So, in short, in response to this question, the range of uses would be, that would be permitted under the two R zone district are appropriate. We're rounding third base here, we're coming to a close. We're going to do a review of what, again, the, the five rezoning criteria. I appreciate your patience as we've covered, tried to cover the major concerns that have been identified to date. So, in addition to responding to those concerns, the Lakewood ordinance requires that staff analyze the proposal against the five criteria stated here. In order to approve the rezoning, the city must find that the proposed rezoning promotes the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Lakewood and promotes the purposes of the ordinance. Note that almost all development will have impacts of some sort. The purpose of this criteria, then, is not to determine if the proposal will have impacts, but to better understand what those impacts might be, and to evaluate if those impacts have been mitigated to an acceptable level. In the staff report and presentation this evening, we've examined potential impacts related to traffic, open space, and wildlife, and it determined that the proposed rezoning will not create any unacceptable impacts. In addition, with every rezoning, the city requires that the applicant provide some technical documents and plans to ensure that the infrastructure required to support the proposed development can be provided safely. For this purpose, the applicant provided both a preliminary drainage and street construction plan. These plans have been reviewed by the city's Engineering Development Assistance Division and have determined, have been determined to be adequate. The conceptual site plan provided is also appropriate for this location for the number of recent cited previously. As noted previously as well, the site was envisioned for a school purpose, and this rezoning would allow for such a use at the site. The city must also find the proposal is compatible with surrounding uses. The surrounding neighborhood is zone plan development with a mix of open space and single-family residential purposes, or uses, rather. Within this context, schools are generally accepted as appropriate. Indeed, in the two R zone district neighborhood just to the north, shown here with the, in the yellow with the red arrow, which is very similar in character to the neighborhood that surrounds the adjacent, the project site, there are a number of schools that work well within that, this context, and in fact, those schools are significantly larger than the school that's contemplated for this site. Again, the conceptual site plan for this small-scale school has been developed to be sensitive to the adjacent land uses and established character of the neighborhood. The building setbacks provide generous buffers and help to preserve views from the neighbor, neighborhood looking east. The third required finding has to do with natural characteristics, and again, the project site is an undeveloped parcel of non-native grasses, but it is adjacent to the riparian habitat of the Hutchinson Park open space to the north and to the east. The proposal does enhance significant natural characteristics by providing a generous buffer, by providing access from the neighborhood to Hutchinson Park, and the applicant has indicated that the building will be set into the grade to again help preserve those views. The fourth required finding is that the proposal complies with the performance-based review process outlined in Article Seven. The intent of the performance-based review is outlined here on this slide. The applicant has described a number of ways that the proposed rezoning complies with the nine elements of the performance-based review process, and the staff report provides more detail on these points as well. But just to reinforce a few points, the applicant has held two neighborhood meetings in January and May of this year. The major issues of concern were identified and examined further as described, and in response to the site plan and design comments received, the applicant has modified the, and improved the conceptual site plan. The fifth and final criteria against which the proposed rezoning must be evaluated is its consistency with the comprehensive plan. This, I spent a good amount of time in the staff report going over these, and if you've watched the planning commission public hearing and read the minutes there, you're familiar with these, so I'm going to go through these next slides pretty quickly. The comprehensive plan encourages development of the city that recognizes its unique geographic location and supports the image, the city's image through good community design. The concept of community sustainability is defined in the comprehensive plan. It recognizes the interplay between natural economic and social interests, and considers both the natural and built environments as well as the quality, quality of life issues. The general land use section of the comprehensive plan outlines ways that the development should interact with adjacent land uses and calls for citizen participation. The residential section of the comprehensive plan envisions infill development in residential neighborhoods and the integration of complementary and supportive land uses such as churches and schools. Lakewood values its established neighborhoods and seeks to ensure a high quality of life for its neighborhood residents by addressing issues related to safety, quality of new development, and access to service in public spaces. City of Lakewood provides a wide range of parks and open space facilities which contribute to the physical and emotional well-being of its residents. The parks, recreation, and open space section of the comprehensive plan provides goals and policies to help ensure that these important amenities may be maintained. So, in summary, staff's analysis of the proposed rezoning against the five criteria used for, in reviewing rezonings, has found that the proposal promotes the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of the City of Lakewood, is compatible with the surrounding uses, enhances significant natural characteristics of the site by incorporating the features into the development's open space, complies with the performance-based review process, and is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. So based on this analysis, both the planning commission and city staff recommend that the city council adopt the findings of fact in Order A through G as presented in the staff report and approve rezoning case twelve zero zero two. Thanks again for your patience. I'm available for questions. We also have the city traffic engineering manager, who can be available if you have questions. We have folks from the Community Resources Department, and of course, the city attorney as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Before we go, before I open public comment, certainly the issue of, of land ownership has been much discussed and is foundational, and I would like to ask a, a question of, of Mr. Cox, our city attorney, and I'm going to approach this from sort of the inverse angle, Mr. Cox. What if we, the governing body, city council, wanted to assert title to this property on behalf of the city? Based on all the information, all the records, what are the chances we prevail?
So the question is that if the city council decided it wanted to pursue ownership of this property.
Correct.
Through whatever means were necessary to.
Correct.
Establish title. I don't think the chances are very good. That's part of the analysis that's been done, is that there are a number of factors working against any claim the city would have had. The deed language, the passage of time, statutes of limitations that would apply, number of factors led us to the conclusion that it would be very unlikely that the city could prevail on any attempt to establish ownership of the property.
Okay, thank you. Would you mind bringing that stack up, Ms. Hudson? This is the point, I will now open the, the public comment portion of the public hearing, and I gave the instructions on public comment in my opening comments, I will reinforce them now, now that the staff and applicant presentations are concluded. This is the point at which the public is invited to testify, to ask questions, or to comment on this item. When everyone who desires to speak has done so, the public hearing will be closed. Once the public hearing is closed, additional testimony will not be taken unless a member of city council wishes to question or obtain information from someone who has testified. First, I will go through the names of the people who have signed the roster indicating that they wish to speak, and as indicated earlier, would do that in alternate fashion, first con, then pro, and then invite any, anyone else who wishes to speak to come forward. I remind you of the instructions I gave earlier, there's a three-minute time limit. The light on the lectern will glow green for the first two and a half minutes, yellow is kind of your warning light, that the red light's approaching at three minutes, we'd ask you to conclude your comments. And just a reminder to state your name and address for the record, and I will reemphasize once again that this is, uh, this has been a highly studied item. This is a city council that does its homework. We have somewhere north as of the hearing, somewhere north of eleven-hundred-and-fifty pages of documentation on this. Council has visited the site. Many of us have watched the tape of the planning commission hearing. We have read this, so, as I said earlier, it is not necessary to be redundant. Now, I recognize that everybody has a case to make, and I respect that. If we get to the point later in the evening where a speaker is not offering any new information, I'm going to ask them to, to wrap up their comments. Okay? Fair enough. Let's, uh, so let's open, as I say, I'm going to try to do, I'm going to try to do alternate, and I will therefore start out with the first name, okay, Mr. Cox, sorry.
We had talked about hearing from representatives of the written objection.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. As Mr. Cox stated earlier, there, there is a written objection. Written objection is, is contemplated in our, in our. Written objection is contemplated in our, in our statute, seventeen seventeen five, I believe. As Mr. Cox mentioned, there is not really any procedure contemplated for a special hearing on, on written objections. That doesn't mean we won't consider the written objections. Our city clerk's office called some of the representatives of the neighborhood earlier today and asked if there was a specific written objections presentation. That answer was no, nevertheless, all of the written objections, which I expect to be covered in the testimony tonight, will be considered by the city council. Is that fair, Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir.
All right. So we're going to go through a public comment, and again, I would ask us not to be redundant. Once we're concluded with public comment, at whatever time that may be, we will go into council questions, and we will, we will deal first with the written objectives, objections, not objectives, objections, and then we'll go on to other questions. Only after that will we get to a motion and a vote. We will conclude business this evening. All right, with that, as I say, I'll, I'll start out with, we had separately colored sheets for, in opposition and in favor. I'll start with Mr. Jack Reutzel, Reitzel, and we have seen your, seen and read your, your opinion, so thank you for being here.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. Jack Reitzel, R-E-U-T-Z-E-L, fifty-five sixty-sixth South Sycamore Street, Littleton, Colorado, eight oh one two oh. I was not in attendance at the planning commission meeting. The mayor's comments already addressed one of my concerns, I just wanted to ensure that my letter of six twenty-two, two thousand twelve has been received and is part of the record for tonight's proceedings. So my comments tonight are intended to summarize the letter that I've submitted, and focuses really on ownership and zoning. Much has been made about the ownership of the property. I have read the memo from Mr. Powell, and respectfully disagree with his conclusions as to ownership, as I'm sure they disagree with mine. My position is set forth in my letter, and I conclude that the property ownership rests with the city due to a, a real property concept of fee simple conveyance subject to an executory interest. I will tell you that I, I don't think in all likelihood that the issue of ownership is going to be resolved tonight by this council, but I don't think it needs to be in order for the city council to find that this application violates the spirit and the clear intent of the planned development, and the common plan envisioned for the development of the property. The language of the PD zoning document evidences three clear and unambiguous intents and directives. One, that the right of the school district to build an elementary school goes away after eight years. It is therefore a mistake for the staff to compare this proposed rezoning to a public school, since that is no longer a use, it's no longer part of the PD. Second, the use of the parcel shifts from an elementary school to municipal purposes at the end of that eight-year period. This doesn't require a change of ownership to affect this, this, it only, it only requires an objective reading of the, of the, of the, of the standard. The use shifts regardless of ownership. I really don't think there's any reasonable argument that can be made, but that these two provisions mean anything else. The right and the use is the cornerstone of the, of the reason why the city approved the planned development back in nineteen seventy-three. The common plan of this parcel shifting its use after a period of time is part of the overall, the quote, "overall development scheme for the area" by firmly establishing major development areas such as land use. Using these two directives from the PD, this council should find that the proposed rezoning from PD to 2R is inconsistent with the PD's common plan and overall development scheme relied on by city residents when they purchased their homes. Had the developer and the city envisioned 2R uses at the time, they could have zoned it 2R, or they could have expanded the uses at the time. This is the purpose of a PPD, it is an overall design intent, common plan. It nears to the benefit of all of the signs of the PPD, including the property owners. Finally, as to ownership, I offer the following documents. In a two thousand eight internal document from the Jefferson Public School District, attached to my letter as Exhibit A, the school district staff itself concludes that the site, quote, "has a title provision to revert to the city of Lakewood for park purposes, and the school district is currently working on a process to transfer title of the site to the city." And two, the evidence of titles submitted to the city by the applicant, Exhibit B of my letter, demonstrating ownership, shows that the property is owned by the Jefferson County School District Number R1 and the city of Lakewood, as their interests may appear. I would agree that the conveyance history differs from the way it was proposed to have gone, but that doesn't defeat the clear intent of the parties. The city's own special counsel, Riley Karlock, suggests that the resulting deed was not what was intended by the ODP. The inclusion of the phrase "subject to the restrictions of record" in the deed suggests a clear intention to convey the property with the rights, the uses, and the transfer limitations, and the duty to follow that. I believe when reviewing bodies look at this language, they will be guided by the intent of the parties. I believe that when taken as a whole, the property is owned by the city by virtue of the fee simple subject to executory interest concept, and that the school district does not have ownership rights to ask for a change. I think the idea of zoning this to 2R is a methodology used by the school district to hedge its bets in the event that the, the, the contemplated school that doesn't happen or occur, they are, they are, they are left without 2R parcel that, that can be sold to, to a variety of other potential suitors for a variety of uses that, that may be wholly inconsistent with the overall scheme and plan of the PD. For those reasons that, that I urge the council to deny the rezoning request. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of twenty ninety coalition, I'm an attorney that has been retained by them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And if you notice, we understand your status, we did not time you, so thank you very much.
Yeah, I was looking at that, I was talking really fast, and then it didn't show up, so I slowed it down. So I appreciate, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we understand, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on the support side, Eileen Kratzser, and I, people may be out in, in the foyer, in the atrium, so I recognize that. We will therefore allow extra time for folks to, to come down.
Mayor, may I suggest maybe reading? Is that what you're going to do?
Yep. Next will be, after Ms. Kratzser, thank you, it just kind of clicked with me too. After Ms. Kratzser, I would ask Tamra Magah to speak, and then Lisa Han, if she wishes to speak, she didn't indicate one way or the other. Ms. Kratzser.
My name is Eileen Sullivan-Kratzser, and I live at two-eight-two-five Newland Street in Wheat Ridge, Colorado, eight oh two-one-four. I represent the staff of RMDS, and I was here at the planning commission meeting in May. I would just like to say that we do have a staff who do live in Lakewood. We were set up by the community, and we want to collaborate with our new community by providing sign language classes in which our neighbors and others can take advantage of. We will provide our fields for the neighbors' enjoyment as well. I just want to say, please vote in favor of this rezoning for our students and our staff, as well as our community. Be in support of our school. Thank you.
Thank you. Tamra Magah, does Lisa Han wish to speak?
No, thank you. I was about to answer.
Thank you. Then Kay Bohan would be next, followed by Shiloh Magah. Tamra, welcome.
Hello. I'm Tamra Magah. I live at two oh seven five South Wright Street, Lakewood, eight oh two-two-eight, and I was not at the other meeting. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Rocky Mountain Deaf School. My family and I support your mission to build a new facility, but we feel there are better places for your regional school, places with good access to major roads where you can grow and thrive. The real problem is you've been offered a building site that is not a building site, but an open space park. This land is well documented as a park. Please understand that Green Mountain is not rallying against Rocky Mountain Deaf School, but against the loss of open space. And now, city council and mayor, even Jefferson County schools have on record that this site is a park. In their own words, this property has a title provision to revert to the city of Lakewood for park purposes, currently working on a process to transfer title of this site to the city of Lakewood. Also, for years, there were city of Lakewood open space signs on the property. Were these a mistake, as referenced earlier? I think not. The placement of these signs confirmed the Hutchinson-Green Mountain official development plan, the warranty deed, the title insurance policy, and the two thousand eight Jeffco Schools summary report. The signs also confirm the expectations of area homeowners and community members. Nobody, not even Jeffco Schools, challenged the placement of these signs over the years. It's the removal of these signs that's being challenged, for good reason. I'm a native of Lakewood and grew up not far from Hutchinson Park. I love Lakewood's open spaces. My husband and I were delighted to buy a home very close to Hutchinson Park for our family. Open space signs were on the park. We are a U.S. military family. My husband has served for more than twenty-one years, facing many difficult situations. He has been deployed to the Middle East four times, and we have endured years of separation due to his service, all for the cause of liberty, justice, and the right of individuals. And now, here in our own neighborhood, justice is under fire. The rights of citizens to keep their open space park are being trivialized and brushed aside. I don't know what the driving force is. Financial gain? I don't know, but it's not truth and honesty. We are absolutely dismayed at the situation, as many in Lakewood are. This is not the Lakewood we know and love. These are not the ideals my family has sacrificed for. I am generally a very quiet, reserved person, but this case has stirred my passion. I have a deep sensitivity to things that are not right. City council, you must realize there is an enormous problem here. Please don't bow to the pressure of those who wish to gloss over the facts and push this deal through. Like me, you can support Rocky Mountain Deaf School, but please, not at this location. Please halt the rezoning process. I urge you to stand up for the citizens of Lakewood and claim this land for us. Truth, justice, and the rights of Lakewood citizens are at stake here. Please vote no.
Thank you. And I, I was lenient with that, I'm going to try to be reasonable, but again, we have a very, very long evening. Is that fair? All right. Next, Kay Bohan, followed by Shiloh Magah, followed by Caleb Pendley. Hi.
Good evening, Kay Bohan, two-three-five-four-five Genesee Village Road, Golden, Colorado, eight-zero-four-zero-one. I was not at the commission meeting. I am the mother of a deaf child. I'm also in the unique position, as I'm a Realtor. I relocate several families, actually business people, to the city of Lakewood. I work for a high-end real estate company, and the number one reason why people move to the city of Lakewood is it's known for being multicultural, has a great reputation. It's the city of accepting diversity, and also too, it has an amazing police department and crime lab. In the one-mile radius of the site for the school, the crime stats, there's zero homicides, zero sexual violent predators. In the past year, there was seven hundred and one citizen calls. This information is of public record, and it can be obtained by CBI or the criminal incident report for the public from the Lakewood Police Department. Interestingly enough, I pulled the stats from today going back twelve months in regards to housing and around the micro area of where the deaf school would be. There's three active listings currently between the range of two hundred thousand dollars and nine hundred thousand dollars, only three active homes for sale. Ones under contract in the past twelve months, nineteen have sold. The median price is three hun, uh, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Average days on the market is forty. That was during tough, really tough economic times last year. We still had a very good housing market in Lakewood. The macro area, taking consideration the surrounding neighborhoods, currently, we only have ten active listings. Right now, four under contract, in the last twelve months, twenty-nine have sold. The highest sales price was eight hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, the lowest at two hundred and three thousand dollars. Average days on the market total, forty-seven. The median sales price, macro perspective for the area, is three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. This is all from Metrolist data. And in regards to the school and the health and safety, as a parent, as a mom of a deaf child, when I pull up to the school and I see a fire truck, and know that a fire started above my child's head that day, you know what makes you stop and think? We really need a school. I've been on the search committee for land, and we've been at this for a long time, ten years searching, hundreds and hundreds of locations identifying, being good stewards, good citizens, going to the commissioners, going to different agencies, wanting to make sure that we're finding the right location. I'm asking all of you tonight to leave behind an important legacy for the deaf children of the state of Colorado. You tonight have the opportunity to change the lives of thousands of deaf children for many generations to come, many children who you will never meet in your lifetime. We all want to come home to Lakewood where the school started. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Shiloh Magah, followed by Caleb Pendley, followed by Lilani Magah, followed by Greg White. Welcome. Do you want to move that microphone down a little bit? There you go.
I'm Shiloh Magah, of two oh seven five South Wright, Wright Street. I was not at this pla, uh, at the planning, planning meeting. To the children of Rocky Mountain Deaf School, it is wonderful that you are going to get a new school. You need one. We are very happy that you won an award and got money for a new school. I hope you can understand why the children of Lakewood do not want you to build your new school on our parkland. Many years ago, people wrote regulations that if this land was not used right away for a neighborhood school, that it was to become parkland. There were plenty of neighborhood schools, so this land did become parkland. That was almost forty years ago, long before I was born. The good news is, there is still plenty of land in Lakewood to build your school that is not parkland. We welcome you to come to Lakewood. The other good news is that you can still come to Hutchinson Park to spend time with me and the other children there. You can hunt for wildflowers, you can fly a kite, kite, or we can play a game of tag. I can show you where to look for prairie dogs. Not long ago, I read a book about President Teddy Roosevelt and a man named John Muir. They worked hard to keep places in our country natural for years to come. Hutchinson Park is a natural place for children and wildlife to enjoy. I hope it is there for many years to come, for the children who haven't even been born yet. And of course, we must keep places for our wi, wildlife to live. I've been taught by my parents and teachers to tell the truth and to be trustworthy. I've been taught to keep my word and do what I said I would do. The school district leaders said they were finishing the paperwork for Hutchinson Park. I would like to ask them to keep their word. The children of Lakewood are counting on having this park for now and forever. Save our park, please vote no on rezoning.
Thank you, Shiloh. You did that in two minutes, not that I would have dared to cut you off if you had gone Caleb Pendley, please, followed by Lilani Magah, followed by Greg White.
Hello, my name is Caleb Pendley. I live in, at one-three-oh-eight West Eighty-first Avenue in Arvada, Colorado, eight-oh-oh-five. The reason why we want this new building set in that location is because we have moved so many places, and many of us students have put up so long, we don't want to put up so anymore with facilities like this. We want the moving to stop. We're asking that we can have RMDS there. I want to see my parents and my family, I mean, I love my parents and my family, I want them to be able to spend time with us. I don't want to go to a public school because those students, they'll just pick on me more. And I won't get the education because teachers and everyone will just talk to us, the interpreters aren't very good, and I won't understand what's being said. I want to go in a place where, not to see SDB like- I want to go in a place where, not to CSDB like in Colorado Springs. They have, would have me go there for five days of the week, and then I wouldn't be seeing my parents. I would be there instead. I would have my parents having to come and see me. I want to be able to see my family on a daily basis. I want to spend time with my family. Please allow us to set up our school in this location, because where we are now is dangerous, and it's not safe, and it's small. We have a very small gym. I mean, when we go and throw a ball, I mean, I think it's dangerous because we could hit a light, and the light could fall and hurt us and cut us. I mean, we've had problems. I want a facility that would be comfortable and safe and wouldn't have distractions. We're constantly distracted by what's going on in our school right now. We need this school now, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Leilani McGaha, followed by Greg White, followed by Michael Davenport.
Hi, I'm Leilani McGaha from 2075 South Wright Street in Lakewood, Colorado, 80228. I would like to say hello and welcome to the children of Rocky Mountain Deaf School. Some people think that the people of Green Mountain are not willing to share their land with the good people of Rocky Mountain Deaf School. This is not true. Anyone is, is welcome to enjoy time in our park. It is a 40-acre park. However, much of the land has deep hills and ravines. This land is not good for playing or walking on. There are about 10 acres of good, flat land, and this is the area where some people want to build a school. It is true that these 10 acres were set aside for a neighborhood school many years ago, if needed. A school was not needed, so according to the rules, that flat land became parkland. And the people of Lakewood have been enjoying that land as a park for many years. This flat land is by my house. People like to take their dogs there. Sometimes they play ball or frisbee. Families like to go for walks there. Wildlife passes through. I'm going to take a nature walk there soon, and any children are welcome to join me. Prairie dogs live in the park and are adorable. I know now that the people of Lakewood are in danger of losing the good, flat, open-space land of Hutchison Park. I don't understand how that could happen. There is official paperwork that says that if a school wasn't needed there many years ago, it would become parkland. There have been park signs on the land for years. My parents read a 2008 report from the school district that said it was parkland. In Jefferson County Public Schools' own words, "This property has a title provision to revert to the City of Lakewood for park purposes. Currently working on a process to transfer title of this site to the City of Lakewood. How could this land be taken away from us? It is breaking a promise. Please, City Council members, vote no on the rezoning. Please save our open-space parkland. The children of Lakewood want to keep this, their park. Once it, once it is gone, it can never be bought back at any price."
Thank you. Greg White, followed by Michael Davenport, followed by Suzanne Sharp.
This is Suzanne Sharp. I, I did not plan on speaking. I didn't understand that that was a, she could speak.
Okay. All right. And then, so that would be followed by Myra, maybe starts with an M, Mans, Martz? Martinez. Okay. Mr. Davenport, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Murphy and council members. Always difficult following a bright, shining, rising star like that. My name's Greg White. I live at 7302 South Moore Court in Littleton, Colorado, Jefferson County. I'm a board member at Rocky Mountain Deaf School. I'm a very, very proud father of a ninth grader at Rocky Mountain Deaf School who's gone there since the first grade. I also have a business in Lakewood that has been in Lakewood for 24 years. I have a business partner that has a property directly on the north side of this, of this open space that's north of this property, and I have a very, very good customer that lives directly on the south side. So I'm kind of involved in this on multiple layers. Many of the comments that I wanted to make tonight were actually already addressed with the applicant and also with the city staff. Basically, the, the roads and legal issues and, and wildlife and, and some other issues. So I'm going to forego that. I was actually going to cede my time until I heard the first speaker that came up in opposition. And it reminded me, actually, I should note that I was at the planning commission meeting for five and a half hours, like a lot of other people that evening. When I left the planning commission meeting that night, which was a 7-0 vote unanimous, and my hat's off to them, they were, much like you guys are doing tonight, very, very patient with a very emotional issue. And they listened to everybody. And at the end, one of the commissioners summed up for like 15 minutes what they had heard, you know, pro and con, and came to a conclusion, and then they voted 7-0. When I was walking out, I heard somebody from the opposition, opposition say, gosh, you know, they just didn't hear us. They didn't understand us. And another member said, yeah, they did. We just didn't persuade them enough about, you know, the financial viability of the school or, or a potential lawsuit. And I had forgotten about that until I heard the first speaker come up this evening. I guess the point that I want to make is, is that all of these concerns that have been brought up by the opposition from day one, from the, the meetings that were held, the two, the two community meetings that were held, have been reviewed by city staff. It's been fully vetted. You've got your city staff and your legal counsel, city, city counsel, you know, giving you recommendations that are, that are very, very solid. And I felt like that first speaker tonight was, was really here just to cede some doubt. And that jumped back to me from that planning commission meeting. Really what we're asking, I can fully understand how the opposition would feel. If somebody lived a block away or five blocks away from this raw, unimproved 10 acres that's been there, adjacent to open space for 30 years, whether they've lived there for 30 years or three years, I can completely understand why they would say, look...
I would ask you to wrap up your comments, sir.
All right. We're just asking that, that you vote to change this and give us the ability to build a premier school in the City of Lakewood, and give us the ability to call Lakewood home again. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Davenport, followed by Myra Martinez, followed by Greg Kelly.
I'm Michael Davenport. I live at 12539 West Warren Avenue in Lakewood. And Honorable Mayor and City Council, there is nothing more central to your decision tonight than the ownership question, and that's what I'd like to address. First of all, Section 17-17-1, Paragraph 2 of the Municipal Code requires that rezoning requests be submitted by the owner of the property. And as Jack Reitzel very, very well testified, ownership of this property is definitely in doubt. And if you have any doubt about who the owner is, city code requires that the owner submit the request. And so I want to expand on a couple of things. Many, many things have been talked about regarding the ownership that, that make this clear. Jack talked about the language in the property binder that was provided by the school district and what it says about Jefferson County School District and the City of Lakewood, as their interests may appear, have title interest in this property. The binder itself demonstrates that Jeffco Schools does not have clear ownership of the property. The three additional properties that were identified exactly the same way in the ODP that were not used as schools were reverted to the city for municipal purposes, and those established a precedent that applies to the Wright Street property. In addition, there was a lot of discussion about the signs. I want to point out that the signs were in place from at least August of 2007 through November of 2010, clearly stating that the property was City of Lakewood Open Space. And contrary to the city staff's contention that these signs were placed in error, Lakewood City Code, Section 9.32-360 states, "All official signs posted in or on any park, recreation facility, or community center within the city shall be presumed posted pursuant to the official act or direction of the director. Therefore, by law, these signs were a deliberate act by the city designating ownership of and authority over use of the property." And as was stated out with the 2008 land holdings document, Jeffco Schools did not protest city ownership. Instead, they backed it up by stating that clearly the city has a title provision to, or the property has a title provision to revert to the city. These signs were not posted in error. The signs were posted to confirm city ownership of the property in anticipation of the transfer of the deed and title to the city. In addition to the planning document, Mr. Carol Speckman, based on his testimony at the planning commission, was informed by Mr. John Young of Jeffco Schools in 2008 that there was an agreement in place to transfer the deed to Lakewood, and Mr. Speckman also testified that he received similar assurances from city staff. In addition to the ownership issue, while the city staff and Jeffco Schools correctly assert that the current zoning of the property is regulated by the ODP, they err in stating that the property is currently zoned for an elementary school.
Mr. Davenport, you're well over your time. Please wrap up.
I'm sorry. I was looking at the green light on the microphone, Mayor. My mistake, and not looking at the one there.
No, that's, that's, no ceding of time. We have no ceding of time.
I'll just, I'll just wrap up by saying that this, I believe the zoning request is illegal because the school district has not demonstrated ownership, and also, they have misstated the, the current zoning of the property. Thank you very much.
It's a teaching moment for all of us. After all these years, we have a green light right next to a red light down there. Green light for the microphone. Okay. Myra Martinez, followed by Greg Kelly, followed by Paul Wember. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Myra Martinez, and I live, live at 30... Myra Martinez, and I live at 3323 South Nelson Court in Lakewood, Colorado. I'm a Colorado native, and I've been a Lakewood resident for about seven years. I moved my family to Lakewood because of several reasons. One was the educational system. The other one was the vast open spaces and the access to parks. And the other one was the proximity to the mountains. When I thought about my children's education, I thought about it very early in their lives, some of the things that were very important to me was that they had access to all the amenities, you know, open space and parks to play in, that they had access to a school that had a gymnasium and, and a great playground and things like that. For my daughter, that was very simple. She was born a very typical little girl. For my son, it was a little bit of a challenge and kind of unclear to me because he was born with a severe to profound hearing loss. I, I searched and searched around, and I looked at different options. And Colorado Springs was not an option at all. I did not want to board him down there. I did not want to relocate. But then I discovered the Rocky Mountain Deaf School. He is getting the best education he can get. He's got a wonderful staff to support him. And the only thing that's missing is that we don't have a good environment. We've searched and searched for different locations for the school, as you know, and you've heard a lot about. The 2090 Wright Street property is the ideal location for us. I feel like it's safe. It's in a neighborhood, which is also one of my dreams, is to send my kids to a school that's right in the neighborhood environment. It feels safe. It's, it's comfortable. In fact, I think there's a lot of benefits to the, to the neighborhood occupants, you know, the, the, the school's own signage, in fact, actually slows down some of the traffic. So it's not only safe for the students, but it's safe for the people who, who are in the neighborhood. I, I don't think anybody wants to send their school, kid to school on a bus that takes them to a strip mall. I don't think anybody wants to send their kids on a bus that takes them five hours away. Being in a neighborhood such as the Wright Street property is just ideal for us. So please reconsider and approve the rezoning for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Kelly, followed by Paul Wember, followed by Jerry Heaney.
Hello, I'm Greg Kelly. I live at 2334 South Union Court, Lakewood, Colorado, 80228. And I was at the planning commission hearing. About five weeks back, at that same hearing, we, the city, citizens of Lakewood and the community that surrounds that, the 2090 site presented to the city, and more specifically, the planning commission, a 62-page document that detailed our opposition to building a school for RMDS at 2090 Wright Street. In preparation for that 62-page document, we analyzed at length the city comprehensive plan and the city ordinances. We learned that these governing documents are to be advisory, and these are all your words out of your documents. They are to provide a framework for all planning commission and city council land use decisions. We learned that the comp plan is made binding by the use of other tools, such as the Lakewood zoning ordinances. We then dissected the plan and the ordinances relative to the placement of this regional commuter school at 2090. In a report to you, we then reached, we recited instances where each rezon, where the zoning and development of 2090 would violate the governing city advisory documents and the city laws. In turn, the staff report struck me as a boilerplate response, designed to rubber-stamp a bias by working backward from a predetermined result while reciting inaccuracies that we have responded to in writing. Let me touch on a few highlights from those of us that oppose this effort. The property does not belong to Jeffco Schools, plain and simple. They know that, and we know that. That fact is clear and can be honored now or can be honored in court of law, but it will be honored. The breadth of the two-hour zoning, secondly, will allow for a number of modifications to the site that have not been vetted in the proper manning, manner and setting. For example, onsite living facilities are possible, and expansion of the school well beyond its current scope. I understand that they say these things won't happen, but time will pass. This will become a full-fledged campus someday, regardless of words stated here today. This is a very properly designed, for the school, this is properly designed to be a monument to them, and that we're in favor of that. But monuments with government money are never halfway built. They are always completed. This will become a campus. I, I, I suggest you don't kid yourself to that effect. Working within the PD zoning is required, as stipulated to the city in a letter from our attorney, and he's spoken to that. This is a regional school, commuter school. Testimony from the applicant in our MDS at the planning commission public hearing repeatedly reinforces the regional character of the school. Please refer to their own words in evaluating the validity of this matter. Furthermore, if this is a development that the entire deaf community throughout the nation is watching, as again was repeatedly stated, then this school doesn't deserve a grant, does deserve a grander location than 2090 Wright Street. Once again, it would seem that a regional commuter school deserves all of the attributes of a regional location. During the planning commission, it was stated to us that this was a classic case of not in my backyard. The acronym is NIMBY. Everyone knows that. It's pejorative. It typically is...
The three minutes are up. I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
The, it was delivered to suggest that we, in our opinions, were entirely irrelevant. I would suggest that you review our comments from the comp plan and the ordinances.
Mr. Kelly, your time is up.
Thank you.
Paul Wember, please. I am now going to stick to the three-minute limit. I'm going to ask you to stop in mid-sentence. It's a long evening. Fair? Thank you.
Paul Wember, 7525 South Jasmine Court in Centennial, Colorado. I was at the planning commission meeting. My original topic has been covered in great detail, so I will actually just address Mr. Kelly's comments here and comments that I would consider or request you take under consideration. First of all, we have no proven record and any documentation that calls this undeveloped property, this parcel, a open space or a park. And I would prefer that this property be referred to that moving forward. Mr. Kelly mentioned a monument to RMDS and the use of public funds, as clearly stated earlier. The facts are that this is not public funds. This is money from lottery and other items mentioned earlier, which I will not reiterate, repeat. There will be no residences on this property. Residences would require another planning commission meeting and, of course, city council approval. And this is not a campus. This is a single building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Feeny, followed by Rick Grennold.
Jerry Heaney?
Jerry Heaney, I'm sorry. I got it right the first time. Sorry, Jerry. And then, and then David Davis would follow Mr. Grennold. Welcome. Sorry about the mistake the second time.
That's okay. Jerry Heaney, 12641 West Asbury Place, Lakewood, 80228. I was at the, the commission meeting. If I had known 25 years ago when we moved into our peaceful, quiet neighborhood, that I would be here tonight defending it from being ruined by development, I would have raised money then to buy this open area instead of raising money for... have raised money then to buy this open area instead of raising money for lawyers' fees and possible legal battles. I too believed the open space signs and thought how great it is that this special part of our area will not be developed. We have discovered over the years that this is a stable neighborhood. We've created friendships with good people. We've shared the joys and sorrows in each other's lives. The Deaf School has stated that they made an exhaustive search for a site to build their school, that this was their first choice, their dream location. Well, years ago, we all made exhaustive searches before we bought our homes. This neighborhood was our first choice, our dream locations for a place to live, not just go to school. We found a beautiful, quiet area to raise our families and to live out our retirement. There is a natural area with great views, wildlife, and very little traffic or noisy activities to bother us. None of us received a thirteen million dollar grant to buy our homes. No one helped us with our down payments or our mortgages. No one has given us money to remodel our homes or improve our landscapes. We have time and money invested here. Months ago, Jeffco Schools knew there was opposition to developing this site, yet they proceeded. Were they promised the council's vote? If so, this was legally and morally wrong. If you deny rezoning, the school can still build their school at their second choice location and avoid destroying our first location for our homes. As citizens of the United States, we have the right to defend our quality of life. We are trying to make the council aware that this neighborhood is a gem on Green Mountain. We are fighting to preserve this great place to live. A great city needs great neighborhoods. One of Lakewood's stated goals is to make strong, stable, and healthy neighborhoods a priority. You have been presented pages of facts, a rebuttal to the city staff report, and hundreds of letters of opposition.
Please wrap up your comments.
This is our voice. I trust that you.
Please wrap up your comments.
I'm sorry.
The rules have been clearly stated.
Okay.
Three minutes.
Okay.
I've been trying to be lenient.
Okay.
And it applies to both sides, all right?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Great. I read this fast as I could.
I know, I know. I understand. I've been doing this a long time. I understand. There's a lot of practicing before the mirror sometimes. All right, so now we have Mr. Grennells, followed by David Davis, followed by Evan Strickfaden, Stricknun, something like that, sorry. Mr. Davis, welcome.
Actually, I'm.
I'm sorry, Mr. Grennells, welcome. I was looking at the left. My mistake. Mr. Grennells.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to council members. Good evening. My name is Rick Grennells. I reside at one-twenty-six fifty-three West Wesley Place, Lakewood, Colorado, eight oh two-two-eight. That is in Bear Creek Village and approximately a quarter mile from the under, the site under discussion tonight. My family and I have been Lakewood residents now for a little over four years. We love this community, and we plan to remain here for many more years. I am also the father of two young daughters, ages two and five, and we frequent this park. We walk our dog there, where our kids play in the playground. We love it. And when we heard about the development, we had quite a bit of concerns about what would actually happen there. But while I certainly understand the frustrations of my neighbors who are opposing this measure, we actually take a very firm view and the opposite opinion. I think it's important to note that while many say they were not informed of the school's zoning, we were properly informed that it was zoned as a school. And while we prefer to have the open space to hike and we view, value wildlife, we do also respect the need for the school and the community that this could serve. One of the things I wanted to, to mention, though, is I am a parent of a child with special needs, and my wife and I are very aware of the challenges that many families in the Denver area have in securing appropriate resources to accommodate the children's growth, education, development. And we are amazed, actually, at the breadth of services, perseverance, and mission of R M D S. I say perseverance because I'm familiar with their location and Applewood. I've visited it, and I know the safety concerns that they endure there. And when we learned that they had earned the thirteen million dollar best grant, we were very proud of their efforts to secure this facility, and even prouder, prouder that it was going to be near our home. I think to cut to the chase here, really what I want you to understand is that I respect that there's multiple views here, but I think it's also important that you know that people in the adjacent communities also support the school. Many of them are not going to speak up tonight because frankly, why would you take on your neighbors about an issue that so many feel passionately about? But I think it's important that you know many neighbors actually do value having R M D S come into the community, and we're looking forward to having them there. We respect that they've tried to do their best in keeping an open dialogue with us. We expect that our kids are still going to play on that playground and, and use those facilities. And we think it's important that you recognize there is a very open attitude as well in terms of welcoming them to the community, and we hope you consider that. Please pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. David Davis, followed by Evan Strick, I believe it says Faden, and then followed by Lance Wegner, I'm sorry, Winger.
Sure. You know what? I just wanted to mention that already this evening, we've had a couple of people say things like, is this being done for financial gain? Has council already promised their votes? Okay, on a personal note, I just want to let you know that's not really winning me over to your cause. First of all, it makes me very upset, and I find it very offensive. So, you know, I don't know how much you believe in your cause, but probably making accusations that things are being done under the table to the people who are making decisions might not be the best direction to go. But that's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Mr. Strickfaden? I'm sorry, Mr. Davis?
Um, I'm David Davis, and I live at one-two-five-eight-one West Asbury Place. And I'm here because of the proposed rezoning issue. I know many people in the neighborhood believe that this is a problem, and I have my own personal reasons why this might affect the neighborhood or myself. Um, I have neurofi, NF. It's a big word. And it causes tumors to grow on nerve, on my nerve endings all over my body. And when I was six months old, um, I already had an abnormal tumor on my left arch of my foot, and that affected my coordination imbalance. So, um, I couldn't play sports or walk long distances because it would hurt my foot. And, um, I started physical therapy, and my doc, and my physical therapist wanted to teach me how to ride a bike, and if with, if I lost my balance, sorry, um, the extra traffic would put me in more danger. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Evan Strickfaden, followed by Lance Winger, followed by Michael Salivo, Salvio, twenty-two sixty-four South Holland.
Hello, my name is Evan Strickfaden. My address is one-five-seven-five-eight Elkwood Way, Morrison, Colorado, eight oh four-six-five. The reason that it's so important to build a new school for us is because we've got leaks in our roof, and even in where the computers are, there's leaking roof right in the computer room. We also don't have enough space where we are right now. Our space, and where, the area where we are, there's no place to work out. When it's P E. time, we're in this little bitty, small room, and we don't feel it's fair. We're always bumping into each other and hurting each other. And then when it's lunchtime, as far as where we have to go eat, we don't even have enough space to sit where we've got room to eat. We're crowded. Third issue, in middle school and in high school, there was recently a fire, and they all had to evacuate the building. So in conclusion, that's why I think we need a new building, and we need a new school in this location. Thank you.
Thank you. Lance Wegner, followed by Michael Salivo, Salivo, twenty-two sixty-four South Holland, followed by Jeanette Kelly. Welcome.
Thank you, Honorable Baron, ladies and gentlemen.
You could step closer to the mic, sir.
Sorry. Thank you very much for listening to us tonight. I come to you right now as a father, and I can tell you that as a father, these are my top two priorities in life. They're my sons, they're ages two and ages five, and they live on one of the small streets here in the neighborhood. One of the things that you've heard tonight is that all the traffic for this school will go down Wright Street, which is a pretty good-sized street, but that's not true. A lot of that traffic is going to go down Asbury Place, where I live, one-one-eight-seven-two West Asbury Place. A lot of it is going to go down Xenon Street and Isla Street. Those are very, very small little neighborhood streets where a lot of small children live. And children like this are going to be endangered by that. Luckily, the Lakewood City ordinances, seventeen dash seventeen dash seven, one A, says that before a rezoning proposal can be accepted, then it's got to promote the safety and the health and the welfare of the people of Lakewood. Now, all of us here want the R M D S to have a good school and a good location. We all want that very, very badly, but we also want our children to be protected. And tonight, we're going to ask you to protect our children and to think about them when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, followed by Jeanette Kelly, followed by Barbara Sotarius. Michael, I'm sorry, it's S A L I, twenty-two sixty-four South, thank you. Jeanette Kelly, followed by Barbara Sotarius, followed by Pauline Erskine. And again, I recognize people are out in the atrium, and we're allowing extra time for
My name is Jeanette Kelly. I live at two-three-three-five South Union Court, Lakewood, eight oh two-two-eight. And yes, I was at the Planning Commission meeting. At that Planning Commission meeting, or hearing, the director of the Rocky Mountain School stated the following, and I quote, "As part of this process, we started meeting with neighbors. The first thing we did, we went to the neighborhood to the south because they had the only homeowners' association. So we attended their homeowners' meeting. They were of the understanding that the property had been zoned for a school, and they heard me out and said, 'This sounds great, and just keep us updated and let us know how your plans proceed.'" End of quote. She was referring to Bear Creek Village Homeowners Association. In one blanket statement, Ms. Brittenbaugh led the Planning Commission to believe that our community had no objection to the building of the regional commuter school. This is not the case. I and many other Bear Creek Village residents opposed the rezoning of this area, which was intended to be turned over to the City of Lakewood for park purposes. Upon hearing the director's testimony, I contacted the Bear Creek Village Homeowners Board and was told that, in fact, they had not given their approval for the project and that Ms. Brittenbaugh had never followed up with any additional information after her initial meeting with them. It is also important to note that because Bear Creek Village is not in Lakewood, we were not notified beyond five hundred feet of this change. My home is located directly to the south, and our neighborhood has been completely ignored in this site plan. The school is not set back from the south side sufficiently, and my neighbor's property line is twenty-six yards from the property line of twenty-ninety Wright Street. The grade does not allow for our view to be preserved. You will note on the site plan that this is the case. Nothing was even mentioned about preserving our views. Homes were purchased and substantial investments were made based on the word of the City of Lakewood and Jefferson County Schools. I was one of those people that called both places when we purchased our home and made a substantial investment. You will hear many reasons why the regional commuter school should not be built in our residential neighborhood. You will also hear many reasons why the regional commuter school thinks that it is the only place in the entire metro area that land or a building is available to them. And of course, that isn't true. It can all be summed up in one statement. The City of Lakewood must step up, do what the original plan states, take possession of the property for our park purposes, and deny the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Barbara Sotarius.
Satorius.
Satorius, it looks like an E, I'm sorry. One of the functions of somebody who runs a meeting is the, is the ability to read a lot of different varieties of penmanship, and sometimes I'm more successful than others. Followed by Pauline Erskine, followed by Kenzie Davison. Ms. Sotarius, welcome.
Barbara Sotarius, S A T O R I U S, one-two-five-six-oh, West Warren Avenue, Lakewood, eight oh two-two-eight, and I am within the five hundred feet. And those folks shouldn't worry because a lot of people gave them the word. I want to say something here. There's an assumption that government employs and government officials are perfect. Well, I used to be one, and I know we're not perfect, and we never will be. So there is misinformation, and you can't rely on what was said when, when you weren't there and there's not a full record. When I moved in the neighborhood in nineteen ninety-five, it was vacant land. So what? It could have become anything. I didn't even know it was open space, but it wasn't all open space. It was partially open space fronting Wright Street and partially property belonging to the school board. There is no guarantee that vacant land you see when you move into a neighborhood will be used as you want it to be. It's up to the owners to make their decisions and to do what they need to do. I believe in inclusion, not exclusion. It's difficult being different. When a neighborhood doesn't want your children's school and recommends that you be located in an industrial district, it's got to be hard to hear. And it's hard to be on the opposite side of all my neighbors with their sons. But I believe in this school. I think it's important that we accept it in this neighborhood because in the end, it will be an asset, not a deficit. It will have minimal impact on the neighborhood, the maximum benefit to Lakewood as a community, and a major benefit to deaf and hearing impaired children that will be able to go to school in a dual-language school where they are safe and they have an opportunity to live at home and not have to travel or depend on makeshift ways of accommodating them in the public schools.
About ten seconds, ma'am.
And I, I guess the main thing that I want to say is I believe this is a good idea and. and our neighborhood is the right place for it.
Thank you. Pauline Erskine, followed by Kenzie Davison, followed by Art Beck.
My name is Pauline Erskine. I live at one two five two three West Isla Avenue, directly across from the property under discussion. I would like to make one comment first. Just because we said we don't want the deaf school on that particular property, it doesn't mean that we want them allocated to an industrial section. The property under discussion is part of Hutchinson Park. We thought all of it was Hutchinson Park at one time. The wildlife don't know that there is a corridor that they're supposed to stick to. They frequently are on the ten acres being discussed. We have photographs of elk that were on that property plus on our own yard. There is a sign as you come into Lakewood which says, "We are an inclusive community." I think that's being overlooked. The area that we live in right now has been there for many, many years. It was populated by people who moved to this area to work for the government, which is why we were here. We came here years ago. The real estate personnel helping us to find a location took us there particularly because she said that most federal workers found that a very safe environment in which to live and raise a family. That's why I'm saying that I think those of us who've been there for so many years and now are made to seem as though we're in caring because we don't want the school on that particular property now, are made, our people are trying to make us feel as though we are nimbly, not in my backyard. It's been pointed out, there's a lot of open space in the area, but not all of it is conducive to recreating on, is walking the dog or whatever because it's, there are a lot of gullies and places like that which are not conducive to recreating. The school itself is going to have only one hundred students supposedly. It's going to have a preschool as well as high school that averages out to about seven and a half to eight students per class. I think that's investing a lot of money to take care of just that few students in each particular classroom. Everything else that I would like to cover has been taken care of.
Thank you for that.
I'd like to present just those items for your.
Thank you. All right, we're going to do the, we're going to listen to the two speakers whose names I mentioned and then we will take a ten minute break. So I believe the next speaker is Kenzie Davison. And then the final speaker before the break will be Art Beck.
My name is Kenzie Davison and I live here in Lakewood. My address is one two six three South Flower Circle. For allowing me to speak this evening, I appreciate it. I moved here to Lakewood after, for various reasons, two in particular. One is that Lakewood is sustainable and the second is that you focus on diversity. Lakewood has been noted as a premier city. The world will turn its focus on Lakewood. Hopefully, because we will build a world renowned school, a LEED certified school, a school that is specifically designed for deaf individuals and will be the only school thus far that has been built in the world that is LEED certified and built specifically for deaf individuals. I'm thrilled to be a part of Lakewood and I look forward to your commitment to diversity and sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Art Beck and then we'll, we'll wrap up for ten minutes. Mr. Beck. Aren't we all, sir?
Okay, I tried to prepare some comments that I thought would bring new information to the table because that was the general guideline here. And I've had some opportunity to put together my plan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's start the timer over. If you could give us your name and address.
Thank you, I'm sorry. My name is Art Beck and I live at twenty-one forty-eight South Zenefon Street in Lakewood.
Thank you.
Thanks. I was at the last meeting and several others. Part of what I wanted to talk about was the issue of communication with the community. And one of the things that I was always taught was that communication required both a speaker and a listener. So certainly tonight, I'm happy to hear that there are people who are going to want to listen to additional or new information because a lot of what the community feels unfortunately is that they haven't been listened to or maybe just not heard. And I'd like to give two examples of that that I think are important. My study of the staff planning information found, and I guess it was substantiated by a substantial document the community put together, that it was incomplete or inaccurate or was guided to a specific decision. The first example I give is in the traffic study was presented again this evening that the next question that the city staff examined was in the existing road network, could it safely accommodate an increase in traffic that was anticipated with rezoning? And it said during the pre-planning application review, the civic, the city's traffic engineering manager determined that no formal traffic study would be required primarily because the existing school road system had been designed and instructed to accommodate the traffic associated with both the residents and the possible elementary school at this site, which that study, any study in any design information that would have been done would have been thirty-seven years old. The code section three point one said, "The following development proposals or submittals shall require a written study." The two that were cited as A and B are rezoning applications and those cases where twenty percent or more of the changes have occurred since the applicable rezoning document was created. And I guess the community feels that certainly that is an example of changes to this particular zoning among many other that need to be part of the consideration. So the fact that it's been thirty-seven years is just a piece of the puzzle. The second point is that I felt that it was important to note that during the initial presentation, forty-three people were, were interested in speaking. And we were given the same guidance we got here that the speech and information testimony should be relevant and not redundant. And so I think should be said that, in my opinion, based on an analysis of ordinances and information, sixteen of the twenty-one people who rezoned, who were opposing the rezoning, found themselves to be irrelevant and only four of twenty-two of the people presented any relevant conversation in support of the rezoning from the public comment period.
I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, Mr. Beck.
My last point is that nine of twenty-one people who were stopped from continuation of speaking were people that were in support of objecting to the.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to wrap, wrap up your comments and I, and I have a, let me just respond to that quickly before we break. I have a timer up here and. All right. No, I, I understand that, but it does seem as though maybe I've had to stop one side more than another and, and the fact of the matter is that's just the way it's gone tonight. Yeah, okay. So look, we're going to take a break for ten minutes. Let me just, we, we talked earlier about redundancy and let me, I, I think by and large, we've been pretty good so far. Let me just suggest a couple of things. Certainly from the stamp perception of the Rocky Mountain Deaf School, they, they perceive their current facility as, as inaccurate, inaccurate, I'm sorry, inadequate and perhaps unsafe. We've heard that. We've also heard that there has been, not only heard from, from six or seven folks testifying, but also heard in our staff report that open space signs were placed next to this property. So I don't think we need to revisit those particular points. Those are well established points, if that's fair, all right? So it's nine forty. Let's, let's reconvene at nine fifty. We're adjourned for ten minutes. I call back into a session after a brief adjournment, the City Council, Lakewood City Council meeting of June twenty-fifth, two thousand and twelve. We will resume public comment. For the record, council goes into a back room here. There are some grapes and raisins and crackers. We do not talk about the case. Topics covered included, what did the market do today, which I didn't get an answer to, medications from recent surgeries, and some, how good the M and M's were, and somebody mentioned screaming kids. I'm not sure who that might have been, but anyway, that's, that's what goes on. All right, so we will start the testimony. We've got another twenty plus, twenty plus folks, I'm, I'm sorry, public comment. And we will begin with Sue, and it looks like H U A N, this is in opposition, H U A N G perhaps, twelve five fifty-three West Isla.
Hi, my name is Sue Huang. I live at one two five three three West Isla Avenue. I grew up on this property and for the past eleven years, my family and I have thought that we're right next to an open space. Like the city staff and Ms. Bakers have said, they've assured us that the residents will still have plenty of open space to enjoy, but the ten acres that RMDS, the site is proposed that those ten acres are the, is largely the area that the residents can enjoy. And I ask that you please vote no to the rezoning process. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do, let's hear from Barbara Francis, followed by Eric Penley, followed by, excuse me, just a sec, followed by Jessica S K I M E L. And I'm sorry, I didn't give much notice there and I know after break, sometimes people go home. Barbara Francis, twenty-one twenty South Youngfield. Yikes, okay. F R A N K S R E.
Hi, my name is Barbara Franks, F R A N K S, twenty-one twenty South Youngfield Street in Lakewood, and I was at the Planning Commission meeting. On page nine of the staff report, and I quote, "Neighborhood stakeholders have expressed concern regarding the loss of what had been perceived to be open space," end quote. Perceived, the, a two thousand and three Jeffco Open Space map depicts the land as open space. The city's A to Z park listing for Hutchinson Park to this very day includes a map that depicts it as open space, as part of the park. We've already talked much about the Jeffco Schools two thousand and eight documents, so I won't recover that as well as Carol Speckman's testimony and others about what they were told by the city and J P S. And I know the signs have been covered extensively, but no one has mentioned that they totaled four in total. They started up from before the tot park and went completely along the boundaries of the property. And at the end of last year, three of the four were removed, including one that wasn't necessary because it was still on the tot park. Those signs, along with other publicly available information, factored significantly into property values and home buying decisions, and that is not a trivial matter. In addition, during a public meeting where the Coyote Gulch Park Ball Field was being discussed, members of the council reminded residents that they need to read and heed signs and also research the property around them. Residents in the Hutchinson Park area did just that. These are the types of facts that never made it into the staff report. This land was not perceived open space. Jeffco, Jeffco Schools, and the city publicly declared it open space. This is just one example of the many failures on the part of the staff to compile a complete and unbiased report. Without all the facts, how could the Planning Commission have made an informed decision? I ask each of you to vote no on the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Penley, followed by Jessica Skimmel, followed by Heather Winger.
Good evening. My name is Eric Penley, one zero three zero eight West Eighty-First Avenue, Arbada, Colorado. I am a father of a deaf child that goes to RMDS and I'm also the president of the Building Committee. Tonight, I'm, I'm asking you just to look at the facts. We're hearing a lot of emotions. My son stood up here and he was very emotional. The facts are, your city attorney, who you rely on for legal information, stated this is Jeffco Schools property. The planning department, who you fully trust to make sure that the ordinances for rezoning are being followed. And they've stated up here before you and the Planning Commission that we have followed them every one. So the facts are, we've done everything we've done legally, following the ordinance for this rezoning, and two, that the property is Jeffco Schools. So I'm asking you tonight not to think with, with the emotions that you've heard tonight, but really focus on the facts. Any school right now can go on this property that's up through sixth grade. Now that Jeffco has this property that they can sell, any charter school, they're watching this. They could actually come in and talk with Jeffco if you don't rezone the property. And these schools are two, three, four times bigger than our school. Last to say is, you know, they think they're losing a park. You know, I live near schools. I loved playing in the fields on the weekends and in the afternoons with my friends on the swing sets. They're going to gain the best of both worlds. They have twenty-nine acres of open space. That's unreal that you can just wander, walk your dogs in. Plus now, if, if you allow this rezoning, they'll have a ball field, football field, soccer field to just play on the weekends, fly their kites. And then the, the nice recess equipment that'll be out there. It's for their use. And then we're also going to offer, you know, sign language classes and other type of activities that it'll be open to the public. I would have loved that as a kid. I didn't go into the schools and sit, play inside. It was unheard of back then, but we, we played in the fields when we were kids. So the kids are not going to lose anything. They're going to gain. So hopefully, I mean, that's, that's all I have. So just, hopefully you just look at the facts tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica, Heather Winger, followed by Noel Rivera.
Hi, Jessica Skimmel, one one seven three two West Asbury Place, Lakewood, Colorado eight zero two two eight. RMDS has a very unique financial model, one where they have very little control over the deficit. It's structured such that they will always have an annual deficit, resulting in the need to undergo fundraising to cover that funding gap. Their two main sources of revenue are the J P S per pupil rate that they receive and then the excess cost funding. The excess cost rate is the money or the rate that they receive from the districts should the districts send students to their school rather than mainstream through the public school. The excess cost rate is actually their largest source of revenue. So why would you care about the financials of a school, knowing that you really can't vote no simply on the hypothetical of a school closing due to financial distress? But it does need to be considered. As you have heard from many people here, the open space is important to us. And we would certainly hate to have an organization or a business come into that open space only to find out that they are not economically sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, please.
Good evening. I'm Heather Winger, W-E-N-G-E-R. Live at one-one-eight-seven-two-West-Asbury Place, Lakewood, Colorado, eight-zero-two-two-eight. I did not attend, although I would have liked to have attended, the planning commission I'm a voting citizen of Lakewood, resident of Hutchinson-Green Mountain. I'm here to ask you ques- questions that the residents have not felt been fully answered at this point in time. Some of the emotion that you've picked up on from residents tonight is just pure frustration with the process. The first time anybody was notified was the January, and there, we haven't been able to talk with any of you guys. We haven't been able to have a one hour and ten-minute presentation given by two, two people from, no, sorry, one, two, three, four people from the schools and one from the city. And even you, Mr., Mr. Mayor, were surprised when they brought up yet another person for their, for their appeal tonight.
That was just my, my mistake.
Well, I know, but, but, you know, you, you sort of expect them to be done at one or two, and there were, there were four. And so, and it drag, it kept going on, and they had a lot of information, and they got to repeat a lot of information, and so we've been very frustrated. And we felt like the process is closed due to, due to the quasi-judicial process. So the, the emotion you're hearing tonight, we're sorry, we don't mean to blame, but we, we haven't felt heard up to this point, and so. So questions. Why did JPS never dispute the city of Lakewood open space signs if they own the property as they claim and they had been maintaining it for years? So that's number one. Number two is, we've heard the benefits for the students. We know that the students need a new school. They also need a new landlord, by the way. But how does it benefit the residents in the area besides the, the playing fields? Because we have playing fields at Devini, Hutchinson, and Dunston. So that's question number two. How does it benefit us other than playing fields and losing our open space? Why did the city not decide to con- conduct a queuing traffic study at South Wright Street and Jewel? Anybody who lives in our neighborhood south of Jewel, there's only one way out, and that, or there, there are not, there's Wright Street to Jewel. There's not Wright Street to Jewel, or Union, or Green Mountain, or Alameda, like there is from the other schools up above on North, on North Wright Street. So why was a queuing study not, not done? All right, so I have two sons, five and two, who will be impacted, and I'm concerned, please think of the more than five hundred children who live in the neighborhood who will be impacted by the loss of the open space, the traffic, and there was one more thing, I'm sorry, the parking lot that's going to be, have an access road right next to the tot lot, which is meant for students under seven, under seven years old or children. Thank you.
Thank you. Want a little extra time, because I initiated a conversation there. Just a quick, the quasi-judicial process is frustrating to us as well. Let's see, Noel Rivera, followed by David Miller, followed by Augie Svensson.
Good evening. My name is Noel Rivera. I live on twenty-four-twenty Miller Street, right across from Vivian Elementary School. It's still a great place to live, even though it's across from an elementary school. The staff report covered all, if not most, of the concerns I had written down. RMDS originally was a very small school, just an elementary school, and now, through progress, we've added a middle school, which has been terrific. The program is not complete, and now they're hoping to have a full school from kindergarten through high school. And that's the main reason for asking for the rezoning from PD to R2. The current zoning is zoned for an elementary school only. So the school has every right to have you consider the rezoning. We're talking about ten acres out of forty. I don't think that much open space is going to be lost. And why are we just having this opposition now and not earlier? I wonder that. Thank you very much for allowing me to make my comments.
Thank you. David Miller, Augie Svensson, and Deborah Hanson.
Greetings. My name is David Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R. My address is two-one-seven-six-South-Zenon Street, located in Ward Four, and within the five-hundred-foot perimeter as defined by the city. I speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning of twenty-nine South Wright Street. I reference the staff report for rezoning as presented tonight. My concern relates to staff comments under the open space section, and more specifically in Ward Four, the staffs reported seven-and-three-fourth acres per thousand residents of city-owned space. Staff then states that Ward Four and Five is well-served with abundant open space and will continue to be so regardless of the school district's proposal. The seven-and-three-quarters acres per thousand is owned acres by the city. In addition, a more appropriate statistic would have been the reported developed acres of two-tenths acres per thousand. This means seven-and-one-half acres per thousand is undeveloped. Undeveloped acres are city-owned but have no improvements on them. I wish to use only the staff statistics as reported online in the map, parks, open space, and facilities as shown on the city council's agenda page. One brief statistic that I'll report that's rounded for my benefit. The developed acres of open space by wards in Ward One, rounded, is seven-tenths of an acre. Ward Two is zero. Ward Three is seven-tenths of an acre, and Ward Four is two-tenths of an acre, and Ward Five, I guess, is the winner at two acres, and that's mainly the Kendrick Lakes. After a person looks over the developed acres, a completely different picture appears. I submit, the staff description of being, and I quote, "well-served with abundant open space and will continue to be so," should be replaced with, "it is what it is." Anyone who purchases, purchases of residents generally in Ward Four knows full well of the steep slopes, riparian streams, but not used and useful to anyone who wishes to walk, play, picnic, ride horses, or any other generic use generally common to open space areas. The twenty-ninety South Wright Street property complements the steep creek areas quite well, giving balance to the whole area. People and wildlife.
Please wrap up your comments, sir.
Benefit with the combination.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Augie Svensson and Deborah Hanson, followed by Robert G. Hall.
Mayor Murphy, council members. My name is Augie Svensson, one-two-four-seven-one-West-Atlantic Drive, on the corner of Lakewood, Atlantic Drive, and Wright Street. Wright Street has a pretty good slope to the south. It dead ends down here at twenty-ninety. Are a couple of speed bumps right here. I live about where my watch is, and my concern is air pollution. Whether it's a couple of speed bumps, or whether it's a possible school sign, the traffic is slow down here. When it gets over the speed bumps, it guns it in front of my house, so I see the blue smoke and the black smoke from air pollution, and I urge you to deny this request.
Thank you. Deborah Hanson, followed by Robert G. Hall, followed by Judith W. Hall.
Okay, now which light am I supposed to be looking at?
The three lights.
Okay, gotcha. I'm Deborah Hanson. I live at one-four-three-four-five-West-Wesley Circle in Lakewood. That's Ward Four. Hi, guys, I'm back again. I just wanted to thank you for letting me have an opportunity to speak tonight. Once again, we're here about the issue of people not being informed. That five-hundred-foot law needs to go. You have all kinds of rules about what citizens have to do if they want to do something in the city, and those, those rules are very onerous, and they require much more. Here we have a group of people who, once again, are standing in front of you because they weren't informed, so they didn't get a conversation. They have now an opportunity for an adversarial situation. It's not good for you, it's not good for them. I don't think anybody objects to having these folks living in the neighborhood. I don't think they object to having a school that they, they can have that does what it needs to do. For heaven's sakes, they're people, they need to be educated. But the people who live there, by virtue of being there and having taken for truth the signs and the information that was portrayed to them, have rights too. They have a right to expect that they'll be informed when things are not going to be as planned, and that it doesn't somehow slide through this and that legal baffle. I think they deserve to have you consider a waiver for now on this issue and to hold. I, I think there is a certain amount of shame on you that has to be said to the Rocky Mountain Deaf School for not making every effort to try to find a building that could be rehabilitated. That is environmentally friendly, not to take and have to build new when something exists that could be remodeled. I, everybody here needs all kinds of help from each other. It could have been a conversation, but instead, here we are again with our three-minute limits, and Diana looks as bored as ever. So, you know, I don't think it's a healthy thing. Maybe we could work on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hanson. Robert Hall, Judith Hall, and Bill Marco, Marco, from South Rob Way.
My name is Robert Hall, and I live at one-two-seven-two-nine-West-Atlantic Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, eight-zero-two-two-eight, and I want to keep it very brief. We certainly oppose the rezoning of this property that's in question, and it's been discussed at great lengths this evening, and I think you've probably heard enough facts by now that would allow me just to say, we certainly oppose the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is scariest thing I've ever done.
Yeah.
I had not planned on talking, because I don't want to do this.
You know, don't start the clock yet. Having stood down there from time to time, the designers of this particular chamber sort of created this, this elevated dais, and I've, I've been down, I've been down there several times, and it's, it's a little intimidating, so my apologies. It's, we, we do not bite.
I'll tell you, I've written a lot of things, but I'm not going to say any of them, I don't think.
You'll do, you'll do fine.
My name is Judith Hall, and I live at one-two-seven-two-nine-West-Atlantic Avenue. And I already said I wasn't going to speak. That's hard for women to do, isn't it? I just want to say that, of course, we want the Rocky Mountain Deaf School to have a school, and if they want to build it or use another building, I think that'd be great. I might even volunteer there. But I am opposed to it being where they're talking about putting it, of a lot of reasons. We've brought up six children in that neighborhood, so I really do have a lot of reasons, and I am a teacher. I'm here because I want to represent the people couldn't come tonight. There's a lot of them that have children, and they couldn't get sitters, and, but they don't want it there in that property either. But we do want you to be here in Denver. That would be just great. And I'm not going to talk anymore. I have a lot to say here, but I'm not going to do it, because I think I would be redundant, and I know you don't want that. And you have to work tomorrow, probably.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration. All right, Bill Marco, followed by Ginger Hanson, followed by Linda Chang.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council people. My name is Bill Marco, and for the, for the record, my address is two-zero-five-three-South-Rob Way, Lakewood, eight-zero-two-two-seven, and Heritage West. I ask you not to approve the rezoning or this questionable and illegal land sale. A lot has been addressed that from a legal standpoint. A lot of things have also been said relative to the open space sign, as well as the fact that Jeffco Public Schools acknowledged in their own surplus land report that this property should have reverted back to the city. I mention that only because I find it dishonorable, disingenuous, perhaps even disgusting, that federal government, state government, and local government can hide behind a phrase that this was done in error, while us, if, if, if I did that in my occupation, I'd be out of a job. If I did something in error, see you. I find it very dishonorable. Now, a lot of us realize and appreciate that the deaf school does need a new school. Yes, they do. However, this piece of property, there's an ownership issue. It doesn't have clean title, and a lot of us made financial decisions, i.e., we bought a home, given those signs that were there, and because of that, we're willing to take litigation all the way if we have to. And I just want to make that clear. And how would the citizens of Lakewood feel, knowing that we got to spend our money, and then taxpayer money is being spent to, by the Lakewood, by City of Lakewood, or Jeffco Public Schools, to follow this litigation case, to figure out who actually owns this land? So I would ask not even to deal with this zoning issue until we figure out the land ownership issue. So, thank you, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Ginger Hanson, followed by Linda Chang, followed by Scott Mann.
My name is Ginger Hanson. I live at one-two-eight-eight-eight-West-Adriatic Avenue. I did attend the first zoning meeting. Okay, here we go. How disappointed and sad I was when the city of Lakewood decided it would be okay to open a medical marijuana dispensary at Union and Jewel in my neighborhood, a little more than one-half mile from twenty-ninety South Wright Street. Now, Jeffco Schools wants to cram a school into a rather small open space area at twenty-ninety Wright. How disappointing, how sad it makes me. This land is currently covered in natural grasses and weeds, but that is home for food, that is home and food for insects and rodents, who in turn feed bats, birds, snakes, foxes, raccoons, skunks, you name it. The ravine area to the immediate north is a habitat different than that at twenty-ninety Wright. Why? Picture the tree growth and change in vegetation. This habitat is perfectly and symbiotically dependent on the grassland to the adjacent south at twenty-ninety Wright. Will as much runoff make it to the ravine if it is sucked up by bluegrass or dehydrates on a parking lot? Will as much runoff make it to the ravine if it is sucked up by bluegrass or dehydrates on a parking lot? Yes, I am thrilled when I see an occasional red-tailed hawk, an owl, a meadow lark, a bat, an antlered elk. I love to see the moonrise over the city, brilliant and beautiful because of the small bit of darkness provided by this undeveloped environment. I am awed by the female and male fox that come to my backyard every evening for water. I have an article here that was in the Lakewood Sentinel dated 5/31. The headline reads, "City Finds Common Ground in Germany." Councilman travels to, and I don't know, is it Stade? This is David Wykman, and he went in April to northern Germany. That is the sister city of Lakewood. And he was introduced, he said, to a common theme for his trip. That was, "The city places a huge premium on the environment and open spaces," which, and I know I'm saying your name wrong, Wykman said makes it very much akin to Lakewood. They go to extreme lengths to protect open space. And I want to thank you for that. Arvada has-
Your time is up.
Oh, shoot. Okay. I had quite a bit more. Arvada has a neat nature center.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Linda Chang, and I live at 12549 West Warren Avenue. And I was at the Planning Commission hearing. Quiet title is an option, and I ask the city to pursue this. Why are we abdicating our rights to ownership? The attorney the city hired to offer his opinion about this matter states that Jeffco holds record title to the parcel. However, if you read his opinion carefully, he never says that Jeffco owns the property outright. That is because the title has restrictions, restrictions that the City of Lakewood must pursue. Is Tim Cox going to declare tonight that JPS owns 2090 South Wright Street with no restrictions? Why are we spending our resources, the City Planning Department, the City Planning Commission, the City Attorney, the hiring of outside counsel, all of it, on giving up property that rightfully belongs to the City of Lakewood? Why aren't these same resources being used to fight for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Lakewood? We, the citizens of Lakewood, ask you, the City Council, to vote against the rezoning of 2090 South Wright Street tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Mann, followed by Jill Stedronsky. Hey, got one. Followed by Donna Armalino.
Scott Mann, 12549 West Warren Avenue. Although the applicant has established that they would meet the health, safety, and welfare in accordance with the law, no one here tonight has established that the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Lakewood would be met. The law says that you must demonstrate that. That has not been done, not in the staff report, nor in any comments made tonight. Furthermore, the ODP expressly prohibits rezoning from PD to 2R. It's clear, read the document. Thirdly, and finally, in this comment tonight, the district's right to use the property became null and void in 1981. That is also clear in the document. For those reasons, together with the objections filed, I respectfully ask that you vote no and comply with the law.
Thank you. Jill, Donna, and then Dale Rosine.
Hi. My name is Jill Stedronsky. My address is 11832 West Asbury Place, Lakewood, 80228. And I unfortunately was out of town and missed the Planning Commission meeting. I own a business in Lakewood, and I own a home for 17 years that backs up to Hutchinson Park Open Space. Like many people, like Rocky Mountain Deaf School, I looked at hundreds of homes before deciding on that one. The deciding factor was the open space. I did my research, I went to the City of Lakewood. I convinced myself through the documents, the people I talked to, that was open space. It was going to remain that way. That's why I bought my home. Last fall, and you know all that, one thing that hasn't really been talked about is the wildlife corridor. Last fall, I sat in that field of weeds that somebody from the deaf school referred to, and I was meditating, and I opened my eyes, and there was this huge bull elk 30 feet away from me grazing. And it was just an unbelievable experience for me. This past week, two huge buck from my back deck, looking into that open space. Three fox the other night. The wildlife corridor, you know, right now, they have this huge space to go through. If this site goes through, they're going to have the playing field, and then the parking lot, and then this very small area to go through. First of all, they're going to have to cross the very busy Wright Street. Maybe they'll need a stoplight in order for them to get through from the open space on the other side. And so I believe the wildlife impact is going to be huge here. The other thing I want to say is, we are hard-working people who bought our homes there, just like Rocky Mountain Deaf School staff and students. We all deserve to live, work, play, and go to school in a nice place. Why should our quality of lives be traded away for someone else's quality of lives? There are plenty of very appropriate places for this school in neighborhoods that want them there. That would be a win-win situation. The school would be much more successful surrounded by people who want them there rather than in a neighborhood where nobody wants them there. And they deserve a great quality of life, we deserve a great quality of life. We are the citizens of Lakewood. You are our elected officials. And I'm asking you to vote for the hundreds and hundreds of families whose lives would be negatively impacted by this school. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Donna Armalino, followed by Dale Rosine, followed by Michael Bugarin.
Hi, I'm Donna Armalino. My address is 12574 West Isleiff Avenue. I've had to change my notes three times while I've been sitting up there, so bear with me here a minute. I wanted to point out that, first off, I'm an educator. I'm a homeowner for 16 years, where I supported the Jeffco school system throughout that time. And I've been, I ran a small business in the City of Lakewood. And I also supported the city's development plans throughout that time. I live within 500 feet of the proposed site. And I think, when I first got the notice that there was going to be discussion about a rezone, I went there thinking that I was going to have discussion. I thought it was going to be a collaborative process. But I checked the site for Rocky Mountain School for the Deaf, and I saw that they already had an announcement that they'd found a site. So I was really concerned about that. And I was even more concerned when I went to the meeting and I saw architectural plans. So you can imagine where the community comes from. There hasn't been a collaborative effort. It's just been information given to us. We've been told what's going to happen. I have a lot of fears about the situation. I hope that the school will be successful in whatever location they come to. Many of my neighbors are saying, though, that we don't want anything in that space. You're our voice, and I hope you'll hear what we're saying. We weren't listened to, we weren't given information, and we don't really know what's going to happen next. So I hope you take that into consideration. You'll make a decision, and you can go home tonight. But your decision is going to change my life for the rest of the time that I live there. I can't just walk away from a mortgage. I'm going to go outside my front door every day, and I'm going to see a whole different atmosphere if you decide to change this rezone. So I hope that you'll, in the spirit of social responsibility and sustainability that you're so well-known for, that you're going to look into the eyes of all the people who are sitting out here and think about how you're going to change their lives too. Thank you.
Thank you. Dale, followed by Michael Bugarin, followed by Cindy Davis.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dale Rosine. I live at 12641 West Asbury Place in Lakewood. I live about 700 feet from the property. I didn't get the first notice, but my neighbors told me a lot about what was going to happen at Dunston, so we really showed up. My comments tonight are mostly about what other people said tonight. Tim Cox said tonight that the success or failure of RMDS was irrelevant to the rezoning of 2090 South Wright Street. However, I don't believe that. The sustainability of an entity is critical to granting rezoning when that entity will affect the entire neighborhood by its failure. In this case, that would leave a vacant school building. So Tim's wrong about that. We have already presented hundreds of pages of testimony to the Planning Commission. They chose to believe the city staff report, and we have filed objections to the city staff report as well. If you read them, you'll find out that they omitted a lot of things, and there's a lot of errors. And they did not present the whole truth. They presented enough to sell the school to you. You should read the rest of the facts, and I know it's hundreds of pages. I don't know how you could read them all in a short period of time. It would take me hours and hours and hours and hours to do it properly. The Planning Commission hearing, they appeared to be listening to us. But at the end, it was Tim Cox's vague legal encouragement that they took to heart. They asked him up there twice, and the second time, he talked around and around the issue. He never once said Jeffco owns the property because he couldn't say it without lying. You ten members and mayor can do better than that, better than the Planning Commission. The facts are all on the record. There's so many facts, though, that you should take more time than you've taken to read them. There's so many of them, thousands of them. I'm not going to repeat them. Your intelligence, your morality, and your common sense will guide you to vote for the quality of life your constituents are defending. And that's what we're defending here, a quality of life. For months, we've endured insults and derogatory comments from people who don't share our goals. We've been very civil, we've held a high standard, but we have the right to defend our quality of life. Troy Talbert earlier spent a lot of time telling us how good the site is for them, how good it was for their health and their safety. He also said a lot about fall and spring festivals, graduation activities, plays, and art festivals, which will bring more and more and more traffic and activity to that lot than the traffic study ever could have pointed out. Because they didn't study all the art festivals and fall and spring festivals and graduation activities and night activities and weekend activities. There's going to be a lot more to it than just daily school traffic. And he also said, "What is good for the school is good for the city." How arrogant is that? That's about as arrogant as you can get. There will be at least 2,000 people affected by this development, and the world will be focused on the blatant disregard-
Please wrap up your comments. Thank you.
That's good. Thank you, guys.
All right, thanks. As the next speaker comes down, I would, Mr. Bugarin, I would just remind people of my original instructions some hours ago that we preserve civility and decorum in the chambers. And name-calling does not meet those parameters. So I would ask everybody to keep that in mind.
Hi, my name is Cindy Davis. I live at 12581 West Asbury Place, Lakewood. Michael Bugarin did have to leave. He had to bring our children home. They got a little antsy. Pretty much everything I had to say has been already covered. I do want to go on the official record, though, as being opposed to this rezoning, with just a couple of additional comments. You did hear from my son earlier this evening, and the big word that he could not say is his neurofibromatosis. It does affect his vision, as well as his mobility and his ability to ride bicycles, participate in sports. He was trying to explain to you his, very much his concern in regards to excess traffic in the area. The reason that we had chosen this house to move in was because of the fact that it was very low traffic. The other thing that I did not hear that I would like to emphasize is that this country is currently experiencing the worst recession since the Great Depression. Every single person in this room who owns a house has experienced decreased property values. And make no mistake about it, if this property is rezoned and developed, we will take yet a further hit. And I think that we, I don't think there's anybody in this community that can afford to take more hits than we already have in regards to our property values. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The last name on all the lists that has indicated a desire to speak is Robert Brady, if Mr. Brady is still here. And then I will open it up to those who may not have had an opportunity yet by signing up on the roster. Mr. Brady.
Good evening, I'm Robert Brady, 12540 West Warren Avenue. I live within 500 feet of the site. Imagine my surprise when I purchased my house thinking that the land was, last August, when the land was labeled as open space. Come Christmas Eve, to receive a letter from the city saying it's going to be changed, and they're going to build a regional commuter school. It was very upsetting. There's been a lot of misinformation that was given to me directly from Sheila Lynch before she departed. And then, sorry, Ms. Baker gave me some information on the night of, I'm sorry, on the day of the Green Mountain Meeting. When I asked specifically, "Does 2R allow residential schools?" And she told me yes that night. And tonight, she said it doesn't. So that's, a lot of our frustration is misinformation, maybe not knowing or understanding the full complexity, you think that's what we've had to endure. I want to go on the record as opposing this, and I urge you to vote no until the title is cleared. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Ma'am, please, come on, come on down. Yeah, thank you. If anybody wants to speak, just kind of line up in the aisles.
My name is Noelle Bush. My address is 9824 West Vassar Way. I live on, live in Ward Five, and I don't have any deaf kids at RMDS, and I'm not a parent of a deaf child or anything. But I live in Ward Five, real close to this area. And I've been hearing all these negative comments, and I just feel that something positive needs to be said. So I support the fact that you would rezone this, so please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come on down.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Zwyer, and I live at 1968 South Vivian Street, 80228. It's one block off of Wright Street. About 10, 12 houses from the open space in question. As a collegiate-level teacher of government and civics, I have a great passion for our system of government and a great faith in our system of government. Churchill said it better, but to paraphrase him, he said, "It's not the best for them, but it's better than all the rest." And I believe that. I do think, however, that my faith has wavered in this process. Someone said before that they want a mea culpa from RMDS. I think they have done a great job. They've heard our concerns, they've changed their plans, they've met with people. I don't want a mea culpa from RMDS. I want a mea culpa from either Jeffco Schools, who came to the Green Mountain Meeting saying how the money was spent. They had line-item budgeted dollar amounts for how the money would spend. So I understand there's not been, they say there hasn't been a price agreed upon, and yet they have that money already- yet they have that money already spent. So a mea culpa from them, a mea culpa from the city of Lakewood, you know, there's been errors, there's been errors. We keep hearing that. Just help us out here. The other part of me is, I'm a mother of two young children, two, a one-year-old boy and a three-year-old boy, and there's been lots of talk about the open space, and I know you've heard it all, and I know you see us and you see the "not in my backyard" personality, but there will be changes. A parking lot right next to the top playground is an issue that needs to be considered. My three-year-old, he's a boy. He runs, right? We like having that space to run, and if he's running into a parking lot, it's not as safe. So if your minds are already made up, I understand it's late, and I appreciate that you are letting us have our say. I just want to go on record, and I plead, please, don't have your minds made up. Please listen to us, and don't just see us as having "not in my backyard." Please, keep our faith in government sustained. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Sir?
My name is Paul Campbell. My address is 12521 West Asbury Place, directly across the street from the property in question. I'm also a very senior citizen because of that house that I purchased 38 years ago in 1974. I read the PD from the Hutcheson developer when I purchased the house. I made the decision, knowing that that property was to be zoned as a, as a elementary school for approximately eight years. I took the opportunity to buy the house because of the other open space in the area. I knew that my children would be attending Hutcheson or Divinity, and they did. There's no need for a school there. I went past my eight years. I'm home free. I received no notice from anybody about the property being purchased, by the way, for $10, which is ridiculous. So I'm opposed to this from the standpoint of it does not belong to the applicant, and I wanted to give you a little history. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? With that, I will, actually, before I close public comment, let me, come on down. If you wanna speak, come on, just line up on either side here.
Hello. My name is Stringer Walkridge. I live at 1970 South Youngfield Street, 80228, and I have lived in the area for about eight years. And I do support the school, and I do support the deaf community, and I would like to see the deaf community brought into this safe environment, and I wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I was a student at Rockymount Deaf School, and at the time that I attended the school, they were in a leased facility. 14 years later, we still haven't found a place to, to call home. So I encourage you to support the rezoning. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, name and, name and address?
Oh, I apologize. My name is Jacob Fau, P-F-A-U. My address is 1319 West, 1398 West 133rd in Westminster, 80034.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Brett Johnson. I live at 12332 West Asbury Place, which is the third house in, off of Wright Street. And I simply can't go home tonight with a clear conscience, with not simply stating that I'm opposed to this. The picture that was on the 2090 website of the sign was one that my realtor took, that I trusted, and I also looked into it and saw on the website, on the county site and on the city site, that this was open space. I bought our home, and I, all the assessments on both sides of that property by the county are based on the fact that it's open space, and the people to the south are paying a lot more money than we are, and I would suspect that we, on the north side, because we boarded the open space, probably pay about a 15 to, 15 or so percent premium to be on that open space, and I, I simply couldn't walk away tonight just thinking that that would, that could all go away, because clearly our, our houses will depreciate in value. The traffic on my street, I saw 450 cars listed as going up and down Wright Street. There is absolutely no way that is south of Jewel. There is no, I will sit out there and count, but I promise you, it's impossible. And the only thing, Jill, I think you missed was great horned owls, which sit in the trees right outside your house, so thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, before I, all right, that, that concludes the list portion of public comment. Before I close it completely, let me formally read into the record, you know, a number of folks signed up on the roster indicating either support or opposition, but did not wanna speak, so let me read those names into the record now. So first, in, in opposition, Marilyn Davenport, Charlene Bush, Stephen Davis, Brianna Davis, Sarah Davis, and Erica Gallegos. In, in support, excuse me, Shane Lavine, Mary Kriegen, Nick Basiani, Kristen Healy, I believe, Kelly and Kevin, and I'm sorry, it's hard to read, Surata, Jenny Jackerson. In opposition, Tom Kelly, LeAnn Kaiser, Tim O'Hare, Brett Johnson, Gordon Erskine, Rosemary Beck, Carolyn Lopez, Zen Wang, Glenn Franks. In support, sorry, I have to do this, it's gonna take a little while. In support, Patty, I believe it's Jermunson, Christie Passarelli, Nils Moore, Adam Clark, Allison Talbert, Lindsey Crawford, Debbie, gosh darn it, Crayard, Kevin Dale, and Mario Carson. In opposition, Carla Willis, Brian Willis, Micah Vicarelli, Paula Campbell, Mickey Campbell, Rebecca Rye, Walter Turway, sorry, Sean Reichert, and Jackie Reichert. In support, Kathy Noble Hornsby, Terry Hornsby, Derek Sevier, Kim Griffin. In opposition, Sarah Ryder, Steve Ryder, Scott Bauer, Bud Bauer, Charlotte Nicholson, Kieran Nicholson, Melissa Dyer, Noah Brialt, Trevor, gosh, Posma, Tim Carroll, Wendy Tyler, Dave Tulsey, I believe, no, Tyler, sorry. In support, Catherine Sevier, Robert Cook, Jenny Lynn, Cliff Myers, Ju, or Moores, Julie Moores, Avery Moores, Ari Moores, Don Keller, Eric Keller, Megan Fretwell, Brian Ziegler, Elizabeth Conkle, Kelly Turner, and Jessica Rogers. We're getting there, about two-thirds of the way through. In opposition, Mary Herbert, Patrick Herbert, Jean Marie Carson, Alex Ryder, Cindy Defeg, another Deborah Hanson. In support, Melissa Peterson. That concludes the list. All right, we're, we're not gonna move on to, public comment is now officially closed. We're not gonna move on to our question-and-answer portion from City Council. And first, we're going to deal with the written objectives, as I stated much earlier this evening in our, when I gave out the sequence of events. So the, the written objection, though, although not, as we've said a couple of times, not calling, does not call out the need for a special vote, we did not have a special hearing. The statute doesn't, the ordinance, excuse me, doesn't call that out, nor did the neighborhood indicate a desire to do that. So let me, let me try to summarize the, the written objections, and I'll, I'll use the, the written objection document signed by 12345678910, 10 folks. So the following demonstrates our five main objectives. First and foremost, the question about who owns the property. Second, the issue of zoning is distinct from the manner, the matter of ownership. As the staff has already acknowledged, the ODP does in fact prescribe zoning. The staff report states, "The project site is currently zoned PD, as regulated by the Hutcheson-Green Mountain Official ODP." Basically, it's, the staff has, has chosen to acknowledge only part of the ODP, and we all have copies of this up here. Number three is the request for 2R is inappropriate and unnecessary. Number four, the applicant has, and, and staff has failed to meet the requirements of 171771A that says, that's the health, safety, and welfare. And number five, the city's blatant bias towards the applicant is further illustrated by its portrayal of community opposition to the proposed school. They talk about the number of folks who attended the two meetings, and mention that 12 of the 14 eligible property owners signed the, the legal protest. So in the words of those who gave us a written objection, those are the five main categories. Mr. Quinn?
Yes, I wanted to ask some questions relevant to the performance-based review process, specifically.
Is that?
Or do you want us only-
Yeah, I wanna, I just wanna address-
It's related to item number, objection number five, but I can-
Okay, that's fine. You know best.
I, I think this would be directed towards Mr. Reed, 'cause I believe he was at the neighborhood meetings that were held. So the, and I understand there were two neighborhood meetings, and apparently there was a focus group that was created afterwards. But the context of my question, I'm gonna give you a little bit of background, is that Article 7 on performance-based standards requires that the performance-based standard process begin early in the development process, that it cultivate productive discussions, that there be active listening and mutual understanding, bringing all parties together. You kinda get the gist of all that language in there. When did you actually start the process of public outreach?
We started the process after the property had been surplused by the school board, and then we'd been, we had our preliminary meeting with the city to understand what the process was and what we would need to go through to do that. So that would've occurred in October.
Okay, and so when did you first start notifying citizens about this proposal?
We noted, well, the, the information that occurs on the school board agenda, of course, is public record, as well as, is out there for the, for the public to be aware of. In terms of the formal notification, we sent that out approximately mid to late December, when we had, when we had come up with the date to have the initial public, public meeting, the first public meeting as a part of the preliminary process.
Now, other than the two neighborhood meetings that were held, can you tell us what else you did in the way of outreach that would satisfy the requirements of the performance-based standards?
We had the two, you know, the two meetings, we had the initial one at Dunston. We had the second meeting at the auditorium at Green Mountain High School. I participated in a meeting that, with a focus group of the 2090 Coalition that was held actually at the deaf school. The, and we also made a presentation, I believe, to the Lakewood Kiwanis that I was a part of. The deaf school has had meetings with additional people as a part of the explanation of their, of their plan.
How many people actually attended this focus group you're referring to?
Focus group that we're referring to of the 2090 Coalition, I believe, had four people that were representatives of the, the focus group, and I believe may have signed the protest that is in your possession.
Okay, so four members of the 2090 Coalition attended the focus group?
Correct.
Okay, have any addition, were any additional meetings held beyond that?
I would have to defer to Nancy in terms of how many additional meetings they have had that, that actually I did not attend.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just be curious to know how many other meetings were held.
So, so I attended four, and-
So we also had some individual meetings with people who, the, the meeting with the 2090 Coalition was an attempt to meet with people who had openly opposed, and then there were individual meetings with people who were not necessarily in favor, but willing to give us feedback, as opposed to just opposition. So there was individual meetings, and then we met with, we met with the Kiwanis and, oh, Troy, help me, Lakewood Rotary and West Metro Chamber. So we were reaching out beyond the neighbors. I also met with, it's already been referred to, but I also met with the Bear Creek Village Association, and just to clarify with exactly what Tim was saying, as well, is that, you know, they referred to us saying that we found a site, but we were not able to get confirmation from the best grant that we would actually be financed until December 8th, and so we couldn't move forward with any kind of meetings or application process or any, any such thing until we knew. And that, at that time, and then, so the notification went out, or the preliminary application was put in immediately after that, and then notification went out in December.
Okay. Roughly how many of those, the individual meetings took place?
Five.
Five? What, single individuals or?
Right.
Okay, and did you make yourselves available to meet with anyone who was interested in talking to you?
We've always made ourselves available, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll yield the floor for now. Mayor Murphy?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Quinn. Counselor Paul?
Just a matter of procedure, do you wanna go through each one of these, one by one?
In terms of the written objectives, if we, if we stick to the written objectives, we can talk about any of them. And then, as we go into the rest of the, traffic wasn't one of the quote "written objectives," so as we, as we get to the second phase, then we'll start focusing on, by subject area.
I guess we'll go first and foremost, after five, back down to one, and to deal with ownership.
Sure.
And I guess, I mean, I, I think we've had a clear statement from our city attorney, who's also the represents the citizens of the city of Lakewood, that the, uh, the property is the school district's, and I guess, Mr. Reed, I'm gonna put you back on to come up and and, uh, go through this for us, please.
The owner, the ownership? All right. Counselor Paul would like to take us, like you to take us through the, the ownership again.
We acquired the property directly from the developer, Green Mountain, Inc., in December of nineteen seventy-seven. Prior to that time, there'd been no other ownership, other, uh, you know, other than the developer. I mean, there was no, even though the ODP language talked about what the process was, for whatever reason, I've found no record, uh, no documentation in our files as to why they went through this process. So anything that, that I might come up with would be purely speculation. I mean, it was, uh, it was recorded at the end of the year, maybe it was done for tax purposes. I, I just don't know. The, the, uh, obviously, the land was transferred, uh, below fair market value. I mean, that's what's stated on the deed. But the deed does, it's, states very clearly, Jefferson County Public Schools are one.
And I don't know if this is relevant to the case, but two properties were sold, twenty ninety, as well as the site where Rooney Ranch is. Was that the same, same purchase, same?
No. Two different.
That takes care of one for me.
Counselor Barroway, and then Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Reed, so so you're, you were, were you an employee of the Jefferson County Public School District in nineteen seventy-seven?
No, ma'am.
The only thing that we have is a, a title that now says that Jeffco Public School District R1 owns this piece of property, sold for ten dollars in nineteen seventy-seven from the developer to the Jefferson County Public School District.
That's correct.
I thought it said ten.
Ten dollars.
It said ten.
And it's a recorded document. It was recorded with the Jefferson County Assessor's Office and county records in December of, uh, nineteen seventy-seven.
And there is no other deed that has ever been recorded, other than potentially the, the developer itself that owned the pro- all of that property prior to that?
That's correct.
This is the only deed ever recorded for this piece of property that we're aware of?
That's correct.
And then, at one point during your presentation, you made the comment, um, you said, made the comment, "The property sold directly to the school district, Lakewood never owned it." And, so just curious, how long have you been working as an employee of the Jefferson County Public School District?
I joined the, uh, school district in two thousand and six, and, um, moved into my current position in two thousand and ten.
Okay, so even that document from two thousand and eight, would you have been involved in, uh, that document from the Jefferson County Public School District?
No, I wouldn't have been.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen?
My question is actually for Tim. Um, Tim, you've, uh, talked about this quite a bit, but, uh, in one of the documentations that you sent us, you talked about how, um, a case in Boulder, I think you said Boulder, kind of made it even more difficult for for people to claim title without, you know, actually having the title. So can, can you tell me a little-
Adverse possession.
Adverse possession, there we go, that's the phrase. Could you tell us a little bit about that case, or tell me?
I'd, I'd be glad to. I, I have not heard the issue raised tonight about adverse possession specifically. There was a suggestion some time ago that, uh, um, I think at the planning commission hearing, that, um, evidence suggested that the city had, uh, a potential claim for adverse possession, which is when you, uh, when you don't have record title to the property, but you use it as if you do for a period of time that entitles you to claim ownership through a judicial process. So it's a little bit different. It's, it's not specifically applicable to, um, the argument that the city has title or should be pursuing title. That's been discussed at length tonight. As I'm ha- I'm happy to go further with it, but adverse possession is a, is a different way of, of getting to that result, and I don't think, uh, I heard anybody talk about it tonight. Um, i- if, for the, for the record, as I said, it, it's a process goes back centuries whereby, um, i- say, you're a next-door neighbor to a property, and you use your neighbor's property. You're, you're farming your five acres, and you use an acre of your neighbor's property, and you know you don't own it, but you act as if you do, and the neighbor does nothing about it, you can, after a period of time, become the owner of that property through this theory that if you made use of it and the neighbor never did, it can become yours. The Boulder case we talked about, uh, with a notorious set of facts, led the legislature to make some changes that made it that much more difficult to establish, uh, title by adverse possession.
Okay, then let's go into, um, what other people brought up here was that we should be pursuing coming up a title. I guess my question is, I, I know this isn't your area of expertise, I know you're a generalist, but I guess my question is, are you aware of any case law where, um, a public entity has tried to take, um, land from another public entity when they in fact held title? I mean, uh, obviously, people have an argument here because of the ODP and so on and so forth, but do, does any of that have any legal standing that you're aware of?
Uh, I, I'm not aware of a case that's similar factually to what you just described. I will say this, I, I want to address, um, the foundation of the argument made by Mr. Reutzel, uh, the first speaker tonight. As I heard it, and as I've read it in, in his letter, the suggestion is that, okay, we, we've said all along that the intent of the ODP may have been for the property to be conveyed to the city for the benefit of the school district, conveyed then to the school district for a period of time, and if no school was built, then it would revert back to the city's ownership. The argument made by Mr. Reutzel is that even though the deed by which the school district took title contains no conveyance to the city, makes no reference to the eight-year period, contains no reversionary clause, and, and could not, because it can't revert to someone who didn't own it in the first place, that despite the absence of that language or, or any specific restriction in the deed, that, um, certain language that is in the deed kind of takes you back and ties that ODP and its restrictions into the deed. And the language relied upon, uh, is subject to reservations and restrictions of record. The argument is that the city acquired the property, uh, sorry, the school district acquired the property subject to reservations of record, and that would include, that, that broad general statement would include the restrictions in the ODP, um, from years before. We've done research on this, and I believe what you'll find, in the plain language of the deed, is the property is conveyed by the developer to the school district in fee simple, full and unencumbered ownership. And because it's a general warranty deed, as opposed to, say, a quitclaim deed or a bargain and sale deed, which don't provide any real protection to the buyer. A general warranty deed contains a warranty by the seller to the buyer to the effect that we will, in the event of a claim against your ownership, you're, you're taking title from us, and if someone comes along later and says, "Wait, that's our property, we're gonna make a claim on the title," that warranty language in the general warranty deed from the seller says, "We'll defend you." The language of the deed says, "The conveyance is made from the developer to the school district," and the developer warrants title subject to reservations and restrictions of record. To be clear, then, the conveyance is not limited by that phrase. What the school district acquired is not limited by that phrase. The extent to which the seller warrants the title and vows to protect the buyer from any claims is limited by the phrase "subject to reservations and restrictions of record." It's a limitation on what the seller must do in the event of a challenge. It's like having an insurance policy that says, "We'll defend you except in these circumstances." And the reasoning behind that is, is clear. The seller is not going to warrant title against someone who holds an easement when that easement has been recorded, and everybody can see what's there, and it's in the record title. So that's a reservation of record that is exempted from the warranty given by the seller to the buyer. So, the language, subject to reservations and restrictions of record, does not limit the ownership acquired through that deed. It limits the protection that that owner gets, um, from the seller in the event of a claim on the title. And that's a very important distinction. The memo you received from, from Mr. Powell, who's been advising Lakewood on real estate matters for, he, he's not even sure, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty-five years. Um, his memo addresses the law of reversionary interests and the specific language that is generally required, even when the deed does say to the city of Lakewood for the benefit of the school district, but back to the city if no school is built. He addresses the need for the specific language in such deeds to carry out the automatic reverter, or the possibility of reverter back to the city. And there's a long history of case law that says, "If you don't get the language just right, you lose that reverter. It's not effective, or you have to do something more to make it effe- uh, effective." Our position is that even if the, the phrase "subject to reservations and restrictions of record" did limit the conveyance in any way, it's not specific enough under Colorado law to tie back to the ODP. It's got a say. The ODP says that you have to do it this way, and that's the way we're conveying the property. That phrase doesn't apply to the conveyance, and does not, in any event, adequately put someone on notice of the restrictions that the property would be subject to. I hope that-
So I'm just gonna summarize. It basically says, they have the deed to the land, there's no restrictions on it, the sign's going up, and the, what's written on the OTP, ODP isn't strong, in your opinion, isn't strong enough to challenge that ownership.
The ODP language was clear as to what the intent was. Why the property was conveyed to the school district and not through the, the process is, is hard to say. There's been suggestions that the developer's intent was clear, and that, that intent should be honored. Well, the developer signed a deed to the school district, and that's evidence of whatever intent was going on at the time. So the ODP thirty-some years ago was pretty good evidence of what was supposed to happen. We don't know why it didn't happen that way. We're saying that the burden to prove ownership is on the applicant. We don't have a horse in the race, except that we're alleged to be the owners of the property, and it's our job to provide you with advice on the facts and the law, to help you make an informed decision that will hold up on any challenge. And we've evaluated the cost and benefit of a challenge, and we don't believe the city would be wisely using its resources to, uh, spend taxpayer dollars, uh, challenging the conveyance under these circumstances. That's what it comes down to.
May I follow up on that, ma'am?
Sure, sure.
So, Tim, statute of limitations. This happened in nineteen seventy-seven. I would think that the city can't wait for fifty, sixty years to decide they want that property and, and that it's theirs. Isn't there some certain timeframe within which the city, if they thought it was their property, would have had to try to make a, a claim against the Jeffco Public School District for that title, to that land?
There are different statutes of limitations applicable to different types of claims, and unless you see a specific claim, it's hard to know exactly what a statute of limitations applies, but I know of none that would still be in effect today. And, um, as Mr. Powell made clear in his memo, this type of action, a quiet title action, as has been suggested, is an action in equity. In equity means you're asking for something other than damages. You're, you're trying to get the court to do what you think is, is fair. And there are a number of, uh, limitations and defenses that apply to equity actions. Uh, one of those is the doctrine of Lachesis, L-A-C-H-E-S. It's something you learn about in law school and never hear again, because it's ve- rarely applied. But, um, that doctrine says it, there's no specific timeframe necessarily when you're dealing in equity, but there's a point at which it, you've waited too long. And, uh, I, our, our belief is that that doctrine of Lachesis would be used against the city in any attempt to claim title to the property, because it's been, you know, virtually a lifetime for, uh, no challenge to have gone, uh, filed in this case.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Coop?
I think it's a question for Mr. Cox. On the third page, uh, of, um, Mr. Reutzel's paper that he packet that he gave us, and the land title guarantee company says, "The title to the estate or interest covered by this policy at the date hereof is vested in," and it states Jefferson County School District and the city of Lakewood. Can you help me understand what "as their interest may appear" means?
Sorry, turned it off prematurely. My understanding is that the title company's gonna look at the entire history of documents tied to that property, which would include, in this case, the ODP, uh, as the zoning document governing the property. And that that would have been the source of the, the, uh, representation that the city appears to have an interest. Based on the documents that they reviewed, uh, it appears that those two entities have some interest in the property. Uh, the deed reflects the school district's, uh, interest. The ODP would, uh, uh, demonstrate, uh, an apparent interest of the, of the city.
So it's just an interest? It's not saying there is any actual claim or ownership whatsoever?
Well, i- you know, interest is, is a term that's used to reflect some uh, legal claim to the property. So to say someone has an interest suggests that there may be a claim. Let me give you an example. When, um, the city, uh, let's, let's think of a, of a example for you. I, I think when the, when the city has to condemn a piece of property, or let's say, another scenario, RTD in building the light rail line had to acquire a lot of property through one means or another, and sometimes they had to resort to, uh, eminent domain condemnation. Not a topic you wanted to or thought you'd get into tonight, but just, uh, humor me. When RTD had to resort to court to try to, uh, uh, assert the right to acquire a piece of property, frequently, those cases would be captioned against the owner of the property, against the city of Lakewood, against the such-and-such, uh, Water and Sand District, the such-and-such Metro District, because they'd go through the title and they'd find references to, uh, some interest, whether it be an easement, a right-of-way, a, a, a outright title to the property. And they'll identify anybody and everybody who appears that they may have an interest in the property. And then it's the burden of each of those entities to say, "Let's look at the record, let's see what interest we, they think we have in the property." And in many cases, the city would say, "Whatever interest we had was a hundred years ago, we long ago surrendered it. We're gonna disclaim that interest, and the case can go on without us." It's not always the case, but I think this is akin to that, where the title company's looking and saying, "Here's somebody with a deed, here's somebody whose name shows up in another recorded document, uh, as having an interest in the property." Uh, and that's what they're reporting, uh, in their, uh, in their title report.
Counselor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe I have some information that is relevant, but it'll also muddy the water.
Is this information that, uh, Mr. Cox is aware of, or?
I don't know. I don't know. I called the county assessor's office, and they verified that the land does belong to Jefferson County Schools. However, they also verified that homes adjacent to open space are considered to have higher property values, and thus, those owners pay higher property taxes. Additionally, the assessor's office stated that in the bottom of tax notices of homes adjacent to twenty ninety, south right, did have at the bottom of their valuation written, it said, "Characteristics of the land," and it included being adjacent to open space, and thus, these homeowners have been paying higher property taxes. This has been going on for about at least ten years. So in one case, they're saying that the property belongs to Jeffco Schools, but yet, there's been higher taxes being paid by the homeowners based on being adjacent to open space.
So is that adjacent to, uh, there's a lot, ju- just to kind of pin this down a little bit?
It's my understanding it-
Now, there's, there's open space surrounding this. Well, on the north side, on the east side. Are you saying that the Jefferson County Assessor's Office is talking about the houses directly across the street from the ten-acre parcel in question tonight, or?
I believe so, and then those to the south as well.
No.
No. Let's, let's, I, I'm gonna modify that. Let us get through it, and then we'll call you on, we'll call you up.
That's setting precedent.
Okay, anyone? Anyone else? Diana?
That was just my comment. I mean, obviously, there's a big-
I mean, obviously, there's a big chunk of land there. I mean, 30% of it is what Jeffco is containing, and that's just in that small area, not all of the things. So how many houses are actually next to that 10 acres? I mean, most of them are across the street or across the rest of open space. So how many are right next to the 10 acres?
When I questioned the lady at the assessor's office, she's, I specifically told her what my interest was, and she told me the homes to the south, which is part of the parcel, were the, were the open spaces that we're talking about for the school.
All right, I'm.
It is open.
Just, yeah. South is in Jefferson County.
And the south is open space?
South of the land for where the school wants to build, yeah.
Right, but that property.
At the end of the dead, at the end of the dead-end street.
All right, come on, come on down.
Yeah, there's. Faces the school, and then there's two.
Hmm?
Face the street.
No.
And then two years. There's five houses.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name again is Jeanette Kelly. Do you want my address again?
No.
If you had read, which I know it was impossible, all 400 or whatever pages, on May 31st, I submitted this document to you with five attachments. Actually, I handed it directly to Evelyn Baker. And in it, I stated, the properties that border the site on the south side are all being taxed by the county assessor as being located on, quote, "open space." When I called the assessor's office on March 17th, 2012, and asked them for the official definition of open space, this is what I was told, quote, "amenities restricting additional development and/or," quote, "county or national dedicated open space." I have copies of the assessor's pages on seven properties to the south that, under land characteristics, list open space. I provided the map and copies to all of you in the packet. It should be in there. All these people have been being taxed as being on open space, and the county themselves has considered it to be that.
Thank you. Now, there was a contradiction in your last statement there. The county very clearly told Counselor Johnson that this was owned by the Jefferson County School District. If they are, in fact, also taxing, then there's a problem between the homeowners and the county assessor that needs to be addressed. That does, Mr. Cox, does that make it open space?
Well.
Because they're being taxed as open space?
I guess based on the definition that Ms. Kelly was given, there'd have to be the belief that the school district can own property and dedicate it as open space. If it needs to be dedicated open space by somebody, either county or state or federal government, but if they're acknowledging the school district owns the property, then it would seem to be inconsistent with a dedication of open space. The only other thing I'd add to that is, assessor's office uses, and this is true of all assessor's offices, they use different measures, different standards, to identify uses of property. And the classic example of that is when you get a piece of property that is used for grazing livestock. Maybe you have one cow, and you are able to put a cow on there and graze, and now you get a tax classification as agricultural. That does not make the property agriculturally zoned. It's a city matter to zone the property, or municipal matter to zone the property, or in the unincorporated county. But the zoning of the property and the lawful uses under zoning are not necessarily the same as the classification for property tax purposes, because it's just different standards. So I, that doesn't explain why the property would be identified as open space and owned by the school district, but that's as close as I can get.
So.
You know, just in, I'll make a general comment here and then go to Counselor Kellin. We started out this hearing by talking about the criteria and parameters for rezoning. And certainly, land ownership is a critical piece to that, and we've been talking about that all night. What the county assessor's office is taxing you with clearly contradicting information, yes, it's open space, or I'm sorry, I misspoke, yes, it's owned by the school district, yet we're taxing you as open space, is not a criteria for us to consider for a change in land use. If that's the case, it is indeed unfortunate, and I would suggest that you have a bone to pick with the county assessor. Just my opinion. Counselor Kellin and Counselor Paul?
Yeah, I have a comment similar to that, in that trying to make sense of all this is going to be difficult, because somewhere along the line early on, this got really screwed up. And in a lot of ways, it feels like a bait and switch. And I really understand where the community's coming from in that. But I think we have to look at the factors we have, and I look at the ownership documents, and I don't see a good legal argument to go forward on that. So I'm trying to just look at the issues we have here and not get caught up on side things that we are not allowed to consider.
I want to clarify, when you said, "I don't see a good legal argument to go forward on."
I look at the, the ODP, I look at the title documents, and I think, I mean, clearly, there, there was an opportunity at one point, when, when the property was deeded to the school district. And sometime in that period of time, probably for another four years or so, I had that eight-year time span, and some period of time after that, there was an opportunity to challenge that deed and to try to get the property reverted to Lakewood, as it was supposed to be in the ODP. But nothing happened for all those years, and I think you lose your right to go after it at some point. And I think that's what's happened here. And what we have is a title document that gives the property, sells the property, basically it gives it, it was $10 consideration to make it a legal document. But we have a title document that gives the property to the school district. We have no legal challenges over the course of, what, 25, 30 years? It belongs to the school district. I'm convinced that title is vested in there. People can challenge anything. You can go to court. You can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars. You can challenge it. And all the lawyers can do is give you their best opinion on where you think it's going to go. And a court's going to do whatever the court does. But I think that Mr. Cox's opinion is a very good, strong opinion, and that of the, I think the other arguments, why you can make arguments, I think they're, I don't think they're going to fly. And I'm not a property lawyer.
Yeah, but I want to get through this. Counselor Kellin is an attorney, but not a real estate attorney. Counselor Paul?
Thanks. Two, two questions. Again, back to the objections. We've addressed three of them, there's two left. Do we want to continue with that or just address those as we?
I want to continue, I want to continue, I want to complete the written objections before we move on to anything else.
And that brings us to number two is the, the next one.
The issue of zoning is distinct from the matter of ownership. If one accepts the. That the objection is the staff has only chosen to acknowledge part of the ODP, the part that serves their interest.
Correct, but, and for clarification, then that's partially why the applicant's asking for a complete rezon instead of a modification request to the ODP. Thank you.
All right. The other one is the request for two R zoning is inappropriate, right? Counselor Wickman, did you want to weigh in on something?
Well, I know this ownership issue is pretty murky, and I have probably nothing I can do to clear that up. But on a related issue, I mean, I smell a lawsuit coming along here. If that does happen, and one side, can they sue the city for, for, you know, making this rezoning? And if so, what would be the implications of a lawsuit against us?
Anyone with standing can challenge a quasi-judicial decision of the city council. And that could be the applicant, it could, in some instances, be neighbors affected by a, an approval. An applicant in the case of a denial, and some others in the event of a, an approval. The typical process, the usually exclusive process, nothing's ever definitive, but the usually exclusive process is an appeal under one of the rules of civil procedure. It's not a lawsuit in the sense that you're going to have discovery, depositions, pre-trial conferences, and a trial. It's a process by which both sides file briefs, based on the record that was here before you tonight, all 1,100 pages and the transcript of the testimony and all that, get submitted to the court, and then the parties file briefs explaining their positions and why they think the decision was right or wrong, depending on where they are. And the court reviews the briefs and reviews the record and makes a decision. So it's a more streamlined process than typical litigation. It still can drag on, just in the district court, for, you know, up to a year in some cases, and where there's a voluminous record like this, that slows it down some. But that's the typical process. And what are the implications? Well, it, it depends on the outcome. The applicant would be defending an approval. The city would be defending its decision regardless of which way the council votes. And it would be up to the judge to decide, based on the evidence, whether the city council abused its discretion in making the decision that it made. And that's found where there's no competent evidence in the record to support that decision, approval or denial. That's the standard by which someone can get a decision overturned.
So it's like, I don't want to use the word likely, but it's possible that there will be an appeal. You're referring to the Rule 106 appeal process?
Correct.
Which is the next likely avenue? No matter which way the city council goes?
The opportunity is there in either case.
Right. And again, this gets back to following the parameters and criteria of rezoning. Counselors Quinn and Baraway?
Another question from Mr. Cox, and I don't think this was asked while I was outside the room, but specifically with regard to objection number two, concerning the expiration of zoning. A comment was made earlier that the ODP, the ODP from 1973 prohibited a rezoning of this property. Can you address that argument, please?
I frankly am not sure what that reference is to. The expiration of the zoning that I'm familiar with is the argument that the school district had, in any event, eight years to build a school and lost the right to do so after that time, and it's no longer an allowed use on that property. That's, that's the theory which has been espoused and which we believe is not applicable because the deed doesn't contain the necessary reverter language.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Baraway?
I'll try to, I'm going to follow up on Counselor Wickman's question quickly, if I can. The only reason, well, the appeal can only be the decision made by the city council on this rezoning request. It would not have, I would think not, have anything to do with the ownership of the property. Somebody who doesn't, was never in necessarily that chain of potential title to that property could be a person in standing to make a case about the ownership of that property. Would that be correct?
Well, I think it's, it's clear that the only people who could assert a claim to title to the property is someone who has some color of title, some potential claim as having been an owner or should have been an owner themselves. And in this case, the city would be the one that the neighbors are suggesting have that claim. In a Rule 106 appeal, where the challenge is based on the findings of the planning commission and the review of those findings by the city council, that being a necessary finding, I think it could be included in an argument under Rule 106 that the council did not accept, did not review the evidence properly. Much beyond that, we'd prefer not to go. We're getting into sort of litigation strategy and.
Let me follow up on Counselor Quinn's question then, or a point. Just because an ODP says one thing, we've, we've had several other rezoning cases heard in my time on city council, where we've had an ODP in place or a PD in place that had set certain parameters of what kind of zoning and what type of buildings and whatnot could be built in that particular span of land. But that's the purpose of a rezoning, isn't it? To come in here and ask for a change to something that was put in place 30, 40 years ago, and it no longer meets that criteria, or that type of use is no longer necessary or nor potentially wanted in that area. And so the landowner, whether it's the original owner and the current owner of the land, comes to the city and says, we'd like to do a rezoning. That's the purpose, and that's why we're here tonight, is because that is an opportunity given to any landowner about their land, is to request a rezon.
Right, and the ability to request a rezoning exists whether or not there's been a change in circumstances or anything like that. That's a good reason to approve a rezoning. But the right is always there to ask. And with regard to that argument, that was another point made in Mr. Reutzel's letter, not so much in his testimony, is that by virtue of the limitation in the ODP for the eight years to the school district reverted to the city for municipal purposes, that the city doesn't have the ability to rezon or approve a rezoning to a straight zone district. It could only modify the PD because this parcel is part of a larger development. But number one, there are countless cases of rezonings of parcels that are within planned developments that get rezoned separately to whatever district the applicant asks for and the, and the council finds appropriate. And secondly, with regard to the future disposition of the property, the argument that the city, once it holds it for municipal purposes, can't do anything else with it. The city charter specifically says that by ordinance, the city council may dispose of property held for municipal purposes. By contrast, property held by the city for park and open space purposes can only be disposed of by a vote of the people. And the city classifies land separately for that, for that reason. So if the city did own the property today and held it for municipal purposes pursuant to that ODP provision, the opportunity still exists either to rezon the property or to dispose of it without the need of a vote.
Because that does, the ODP did say municipal purposes. It never said, it did not say park.
That's right.
It said municipal. Municipal, as we were seeing in the slide from Ms. Baker, could include a recycling center, a maintenance facility, even a head start school. Thank you.
All right. Before. Sure.
Question on that, too, the municipal purposes. I think that's critical, because there has been a lot of talk tonight about parkland, and we, it's very distinct, the difference between municipal purposes and parkland. Can the city convey land that's municipal purpose to the school district without? What are the requirements regarding each? I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, the charter says that the city council may, by ordinance, dispose of, sell, dispose of or sell property held for municipal purposes. And there's no limitation in the charter on to whom that could be sold or for what purpose. I've heard the argument made that because the ODP contemplated a period of time during which the school district would have the opportunity to build something, and then if it failed to do so, and the, and the property reverted to the city for municipal purposes, that it would be inappropriate for the city to then convey it to the school district in the future. I, I'm not sure that that's the case without, without any specific restriction elsewhere. Telling a landowner, you can sell it, but not to X, Y, or Z, is generally frowned upon and consider the possibility that it could be sold to some other entity who could then, who would not then be restricted to selling it to a school district. I don't know how you'd enforce that kind of a provision and say that the school district is not a potential buyer of property held by the city for municipal purposes.
And parkland cannot be sold?
Without a vote of the electorate.
Okay, we're going to take a break. I just want to make sure we're done with all the written objections. Any questions on the question of two R zoning, whether it's appropriate and necessary? Any questions on allegations of bias towards the city by sort of a parenthetical reference to 12 of 14 homeowners signing the legal protest? Any questions about the requirements, the health, safety, and welfare requirements? All right, seeing none, we're done with the legal objection portion. All right, seeing none, we're done with the legal objection portion of it. It's 11:42, we'll take a break and we'll come back at 11:52. We're recessed. I reconvene the Lakewood City Council session of still June 25, 2012. It's now 11:52 PM. We will now move on to general questions from city council. Let me, once again, as we begin Part Three, emphasize the criteria and parameters of a rezoning ordinance. And there are some things that, you know, we had some discussions about potential lawsuits either way. You know, we need to, we need to stick to the criteria and parameters of the zoning ordinance, of rezonings, excuse me. Let me just give you an example of some testimony we heard tonight that, though interesting, does not apply to, is not, is not a criteria for rezoning. We had very early in the evening, we had one person, one proponent and one opponent talk about real estate values. Early in the evening, somebody talked about home values around there, the time they're on the market, that sort of thing. And then very late in the evening, someone talked about the value drop in homes, the perceived value drop through the Great Recession. Interesting information, it's just not pertinent to the task at hand here. So that's, it's our job as a quasi judicial body to stick to the pertinent facts. So I'm going to suggest to council some topics here. We certainly have delved very much into the issue of ownership. I believe based upon the written objections that that topic is now put to bed. Certainly you can bring it up if you want to. I would throw out another couple of topics, several topics. The issue, and I'm going to bring up the issue of signs on the property, the issue of a so-called regional commuter school vis a vis the traffic generated by the existing schools in the neighborhood. There's several questions about the need to have a written traffic study updated. There's some questions about traffic, potential traffic impacts on side streets, that whole general traffic issue. I want to kind of put to get, put to bed the question of whether two R zoning allows dormitories or residence at schools. And I'd also like to address the question of why build new. We heard some testimony and I'd like to, I'll ask the applicant to come up and do that. So those are some suggested categories. We don't have to limit ourselves to that, but those have been common themes through the 1,100-plus pages of documentation and testimony this evening. So I will start and let me, let me talk about, let me ask Mr. Cox a question. Does a sign that says open space, or I think I saw today a Jefferson County map of 2008 that may have colored this area in green, does that legally designate it as open space?
Well, we heard one definition from the, apparently from the assessor's office as to what constitutes open space. The city has its own definition. There could be a number of factors that could be considered in whether someone believes the property to be open space and whether they rely on that information in making decisions about buying property. I would submit that it's either open space or it's not according to the official records kept by the city and kept by the county and that evidence of signs or representations made by city personnel at one time or another may form the basis of someone's reliance on the representations, but does not officially characterize anything as open space. Certainly it's a question of degree as well. If the property always had signs saying this is open space, you know, held by the City of Lakewood Community Resources Department as open space and those signs had always been there, then it's more reasonable to rely on that fact in making decisions. That then, still doesn't make it open space if there's an official record contradicting that. So I'm not sure if I've answered the question, but.
So if, you know, what would our legal standing be if we denied this rezoning based on signs and Google Maps?
It would be, if you're suggesting that the council makes a determination that the property is open space and not property owned by the school district for some other purpose, based on the fact that the signs were there for a period of time, would be somewhat difficult to defend.
Okay, shaky ground.
I think so.
Okay. Okay, any, anyone else want to address traffic? Counselor Wickman?
At the risk of belaboring a point, I guess I am a little still confused as to, there was some reference that there was four or five properties in the neighborhood that all had these reversionary clauses or something like that and the others all somehow got into city hands, the reversions kicked in or something like that. So I guess the question is if that's true, why did it go that way in those cases and not go that way in this case? Why is this one different?
Well, we've looked at the record in the various different properties in the area and the answer to that is pretty simple because each of those properties that reverted to the city had been conveyed to the city for the benefit of the school district with a reverter to the city if the school was not built within a period of time. Those deeds had the language that had been in the ODP in them. This deed did not. That's the fundamental difference is the way the property was conveyed in those cases was consistent with what the ODP had designated them for.
Okay, so I've got Counselors Coop, Baraway, and Paul. All right, Counselor Paul, Counselor Baraway, and then Counselor Coop.
Thank you. Moving on to traffic, there was two things. There was a mention to the fact that the traffic study has not been updated in 30 or 40 years. My understanding is when they closed Wright Street, there was an updated study done that still said that there was capacity or it changed a little bit. That's one. And then there was some talk about a queuing study on the corner of Wright and Jewel. And further, I just like the comparison, my understanding is Wright Street's the same width that goes, as it goes past Hut, Deviney and Dunston, but would probably handle more capacity on that side than Wright Street. So sort of kind of my questions.
John Payden, Traffic Engineering Manager for the City of Lakewood. The question was, why wasn't a traffic study required? The city does hold some discretion on what we require traffic studies with. Traffic studies may be required by the city in order to adequately assess the impacts of the development proposal on the existing or planned street system. So we may require a traffic study. That's right out of our traffic engineering design standards that are adopted by city council. The next line says unless waived by the city, a written traffic study will be required. We did waive this. Just because we rezoned properties doesn't mean a traffic study is always required. We actually downzoned some properties. When we looked at this in the pre-planning stages, I looked at what was available on a property today, which was an elementary school K through six and then the deaf school proposal of 100 students. I did a quick comparison through the ITE trip generation and determined that the impacts to the 100 student school, private school was less than a public school K through six would generate. Therefore, the public improvements were in place already and no need to redo a study for that.
Help me understand too, what took place when the road was closed? It was, we downgraded the street from collector to?
Originally, the major street plan showed Wright Street connecting to Auburn Avenue. Auburn would connect to Yale all the way out to Kipling Parkway. When Jefferson County developed Bear Creek Village, they would not allow Wright Street to connect to Auburn. They actually placed a piece of private property between the end of our right of way and Auburn and never allowed that to go through. Once Jefferson County made that decision through their development process, the city no longer had the ability to connect Wright Street. Therefore, when we redid our transportation engineering standards, we downgraded Wright Street from a minor collector to a local street, knowing that it would never carry the traffic out to Yale or Kipling Parkway from Wright Street.
Do you recall what year that was?
2007 is when we redid ours. Bear Creek Village, I believe, was 1994.
Okay, so this has been looked at twice within the last few years, once recently, once in 2007.
2007 is when we.
Help me understand what a queuing study is?
The queuing study is a portion of the traffic study if we required one. It tells you how long the cars will stack up in the left turn lane and if you have adequate capacity to hold those vehicles. With the way Jewel and Wright Street are today, they're way under capacity compared to other portions of Jewel. As you've moved farther to the east, Jewel almost doubles in capacity from 10,000 to 20,000 vehicles a day. Knowing that the capacity of Jewel can probably control 40,000 cars, to look at a queuing analysis or the traffic study at an intersection that's that far under capacity just really didn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Counselor Baraway, Coop, and Wickman, traffic.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Reed?
Is he still, is he still down?
Yes, he's down there. Thanks. So earlier in your presentation, you made the comment, and I think I got this number right, that there's 1,257 students between Dunston, Deviney, and Hutchinson or thereabouts.
That's correct. That's their combined enrollment.
Enrollment. And about 39% of that combined enrollment come from out of the district.
That's also correct.
And then you also made the comment that few people, for whatever reason, children don't necessarily walk to school.
That's also correct.
So if a school K through six had been built on this site, this 10-acre site, approximately how many students might have gone to that school?
Typically, today, we would not do a school for less than 575 students. And our most recent elementary school, which is Mickelson, Al Mickelson School, which is up in Arvada, has a 750 roughly enrollment or at least design capacity. And Bear Creek K-8, which is, even though it's a K-8, has 1,125 students. So as you can see, as, as public education involves in the design of education buildings, they're getting bigger and bigger.
Okay. So do you require or do you, are you aware whether or not elementary schools and/or middle schools have any type of carpool lane setup? I know that when I've taken children to school, there's typically quite a bit of cars backed up at any, even in a neighborhood school.
We typically at our, certainly at our elementary schools, not so much at the middle schools, we have what are called hug and go lanes where the parent sort of comes up, gives a kid a kiss, pushes him out the door. Middle schools, I just kind of, I think, push them out the door.
We're lucky if they say goodbye, yes.
Yes.
So I don't know if this, if you could answer this question, or maybe it's the architect that could answer the question, but in terms of the Rocky Mountain deaf school, are there plans in place to, I guess, accommodate folks who wish to drop off their students as their, and pick them up at the end of the day to alleviate maybe the traffic on Wright Street?
Yes, we would accommodate that on the site. We haven't designed that yet. We're really not to that phase of the project, but we will, there will be a drop off and pick, drop off and pickup area to accommodate the kind of traffic that you're talking about.
And the area you just think you'll be designing might be on your property as opposed to on the street?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Coop.
Mr. Payden, I'd like to just ask a follow-up question to one that Counselor Paul was asking. When Wright Street was changed from a collector street to a local street, was there any change in the street itself? Was it altered in any way?
No. Width was the same. We never narrowed the road for any reason. It was, always remained at 44 feet, flow line to flow line.
Okay, thank you. I have a question. There was several references to speed bumps on Wright Street or some of the other streets around there. I'm not sure how many other streets have speed bumps on them around there. Is there, is that going to change at all? Are those speed bumps being, are going to go away?
No. The speed humps are taken out the same way they're installed. They go through a petition process of the neighborhood block that requested them. The same people that requested them to be installed would be the same people or same property owners that would request the removal of the speed humps.
So that would require neighborhood meetings of some kind?
Typically, what we do is if we get a request for the removal of a speed bump, we send out the petition to the person who requested the removal. They take it around for signatures. It has to meet the same criteria, 80% in favor of the removal, 95% of the people need to sign the petition. So it would just be a reverse process.
And there's been no request for removal by anyone at this time?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Wickman, traffic?
No, that's not another issue.
Oh, okay. Mr. Payden, could you address the potential for impacts on smaller neighborhood streets from the additional traffic generated by this potential development? It's speculation.
It's total speculation. I went out hearing the neighborhood concerns with regard to cut through traffic. Me, I wouldn't do it. I would come in from Jewel and Wright, especially anybody from the north or the east of this site. I wouldn't expect anyone to use any cut through traffic. Potentially southwest, there could be some cut through traffic generated from maybe Yale to Warren Drive. That would be the most likely cut through. If you try to take, you know, Atlantic out to Asbury on Kipling, that's very circuitous. It's got dips, bumps, four-way stops. It took me a travel time of two minutes longer to go that way than it would just to stay on Kipling, go to Jewel and to Wright Street. So there are very limited cut through ways that are more advantageous than just using the Jewel and Wright intersection.
And just to verify the figures I wrote down, we redesignated Wright Street as a, as a local street with a capacity of 2,500 cars.
That's correct.
A day. It now carries 480 cars a day. Is that from Jewel south?
That's adjacent to the school site.
Right.
Not directly south of Jewel, but adjacent to the.
Right. And that clears up a question by a neighbor earlier who said there's more than 480.
If he's two houses down from Jewel, he's probably got more.
Right, okay. So on this portion of Wright Street and actually on all of Wright Street, south of Jewel, this development will potentially add 248 trips a day.
That's correct.
Okay. And the portion of Wright Street adjacent to 2090, that will give us a total of 728 trips a day with a capacity of 2,500, so we're at 29% of capacity.
That's correct.
Do you have any opinion on, Mr. Reed gave us some statistics about the neighboring schools and how many students go in and out each day. 457 go out of district, 490 come into the district. Further north on Wright Street, any, any opinion? Actually, I don't want an opinion, it needs to be statistical, but how many additional trips that generates? It needs to be statistical, but how many additional trips that generates? Four hundred and fifty-seven plus four ninety?
I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out the exact question.
Okay, so, we have, due to open enrollment, four hundred, given Dunston, Devini, and Rooney, just kind of in the general area, four hundred and fifty-seven students go out of the district every day, four hundred and ninety come into the district every day. What kind of additional traffic does that generate?
Typically, with an elementary school that's considered neighborhood, which we're getting out of that realm anymore. We look at a trip generation of one point two-nine trips per student enrollment.
Okay. Thank you. Counselor Wickman, still traffic? No, not yet? Counselor Paul?
All up on traffic, thank you. On the secondary streets that connect to Wright, what's, what's the daily flow you see on those typically?
That connect to Wright?
That connect to Wright?
They're probably in the neighborhood of three fifty to two fifty, somewhere in that area.
So, they're handling?
There's a little more of a grid in that area. Most of those streets kind of filter into Wright Street, so it's kind of a little grid area that moves into Wright, so they probably carry less traffic than that section.
Thank you.
Any more traffic questions? Counselor Wickman?
Yep.
First question, two R. What is the, what is permitted in the way of, how, how many houses are allowed in a two-R district?
Evelyn Baker again with the City of Liquid Planning. In the two-R zone district, the regulations are provided in your staff report. The minimum lot size per lot, there's no, it's not measured in density. It's one house per lot. Each lot has a minimum of six thousand square feet. Does that answer your question?
The reason I'm asking, the report, and I don't know how to reference it here, it's on our big old long list. It's page a hundred out of seven hundred and sixty-seven, or it's page four out of nineteen on the staff report. Anyway, there's a chart, and it says existing zoning and the proposed zoning. And there's this one line that says maximum units per acre. And it says, in the surrounding neighborhood, it's three point five DU's, dwelling units per acre. And in our proposed site, it says it's inapplicable. Well, the confusion is, we're saying it's going to be two R, but doesn't two R have some sort of density requirements?
Not an explicit density requirement. One can imply or infer a density with the six thousand square feet minimum lot size per unit. You can back into that and get roughly around seven dwelling units per acre, I believe. Is that correct?
Okay, so about seven units per, per acre.
But that, just to be clear, that standard doesn't exist in our, in our zone district for two R. We, nowhere in here does it say the maximum density is seven dwelling units per acre. What it does say is that the minimum lot size is six thousand square feet. So, you just have to figure out how many six thousand square foot lots you can fit on a forty-three thousand, I can't even remember how much, five hundred and sixty square foot lot, which is an acre. And that's where you back into that seven, generally a seven dwelling unit per acre.
Well, I was trying to figure out, you were saying that it was consistent with neighboring areas that were two R, north of Juul. But then the, the areas that are immediately adjacent are PD, and, and according to this, that's three point five dwelling units per acre, where if two, where two R can go up to seven dwelling units per acre, that's almost twice as much as far as number of dwelling units. So, that's what I'm trying to clarify.
Your, your understanding is correct, that the standards aren't an exact match. But, again, the two, if you were to drive north on Wright Street, north of Juul, and drive around that neighborhood, you'd see the development and lotting patterns are very similar to that within the, the neighborhood immediately adjacent to the project's site. That's essentially what I was trying to say, is that the development pattern north of Juul, which is two R, closely matches the development pattern south of Juul, which is PD.
I'm not sure about closely, closely matched. Sounds like it's twice as dense.
If I could kick in as well, we're talking about six thousand units per acre. The reason there's not a direct translation is that there's more than just, that's, that's, each lot has to be six thousand units. Along with lots that are come right of way, other things that aren't included in the lot area that make up part of those acres. So, you're not ever going to actually accomplish seven units an acre. It's, it's a theoretical exercise to even talk about that. The fact of the matter is, in the PD surrounding, the unit, the, the lots are around seven thousand square feet, and you're allowed to do six thousand square, square feet in two R. So, the, the, talking about dwelling units per acre, it's, it's a theoretical exercise because it's not a direct correlation. The lot sizes are the same in two R as they are in the surrounding area.
Okay. Mr. Reed? Is it your intention to convey this property to the Rocky Mountain Deaf School for the purpose of constructing a school?
Absolutely.
No other purpose?
No other purposes.
Thank you. Any other traffic issues? Or any other issues? I'd like to ask the applicant, there was, we heard a testimony about building new versus reusing. This is probably Nancy. Would you address the issue of reuse? And if I remember right, it's been, a lot of info has flowed through the brain here since the planning commission hearing, but I, I remember some stipulations from the BEST grant, perhaps about reuse versus new. Could you address that?
Right. So, we actually did look at, in, in particular, one specific property that we were very interested in that had a school there, and looked at renovating that site, and went through a complete exercise. And it was cost prohibitive. It was more expensive to renovate a site based on the needs that we have to specifically design it for deaf and hard of hearing students. And so, the BEST staff recommended that we not propose a rezoning, and we have specific documentation of that, that they recommend. Excuse me, I used the word rezoning. I'm getting tired, I'm sorry. Specifically recommended that we don't renovate. Renovate was the word I was looking for. Specifically recommended that we do not look at renovating a site, that we look at building. And so, that's what we were approved for.
For building new?
For building new.
Okay, thank you. Counselors Paul and Quinn?
You went and sat down. I think my question's going to be for you. I have two questions, and I think there's, what I heard was that there would be no dorms, and I heard that there's no dorms allowed in two R. Like, crystal clear on the fact that there'll be no dorms?
We have absolutely no plans for residential facility. There is a residential facility in Colorado Springs. We provide the alternative to that. We will not be a residential facility.
Help me understand the hundred-student max.
So, what happened is we designed a building for a certain amount of students. So, there's been a lot of questions to the BEST staff from the neighbors regarding, you know, do you specifically limit the number of students? What they did is, was limit the size of the building. So, they tell us that we can build a forty-six thousand square foot building. And then within our proposal, we say, you know, how many students that could fill for us? It is true that that's about eight students per classroom, not classroom, but, but class size. We are a one-to-eight student ratio for this specific population due to their special needs and also due to visual access.
And so, are you capped at one hundred?
It means that the building will only be built for a hundred students.
Thank you.
I don't know, did you get your clarification that two R does not allow? I didn't think we have a chance to have Ms. Baker answer that.
That's correct.
Two-R zoning does not allow residential campus at a school?
Yes, two-R zoning would not allow residential campus.
Counselor Quinn?
Thank you. Forgot my microphone. This question is related to the need, but it's also related to the issue of the performance-based review process as well. I'm wondering if the need for a new building relates to the requirement for LEED certification in any way?
Yes, in large part it does.
Okay. So, the requirement under the BEST grant is for LEED gold, is that correct?
Correct.
So, no lower standard is allowed?
Correct.
Okay. So, and it would be more difficult then to have a LEED gold-certified building by retrofitting a building versus building a new one?
Correct. So, it's both the LEED certification and the specific needs of our students.
Okay.
Both items, in terms of retrofitting.
Okay, okay. That also relates back to sustainability, so that's, I sort of combined two things together on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Quinn. Other questions? Oh, sorry, Tom.
It's okay, it's getting late. I wanted to go back to one of the other criteria for a rezoning, and that is that the proposal, as evidenced by the conceptual site plan enhances the significant natural characteristics of the site by preserving or incorporating them into the development's open space. And I had some specific questions from Mr. Pfeifer. Thank you. One of the issues I'm struggling with here is that we have an undeveloped site that's primarily at this time, non-native grassland. But I'm having some difficulty understanding how what you're doing is enhancing the natural characteristics of the site. Can you explain that a little bit more? And particularly in the context of the wildlife habitat. You indicated the proposal respects the wildlife habitat on the site. Can you elaborate a bit more on that?
Well, I would say simply that it, it, it does so in that it doesn't prevent the wildlife corridor that goes from the southeast to the northwest will still exist. Obviously, we're, we're building a building, as has been pointed out in a lot of the testimony. We, we're building a, proposing to build a building on the, on the flatter portion of the site, that is true. There will still be large, open areas of the site. It will be open and flat. We've talked about the playfields and that sort of thing. But the, the building itself is not going to prohibit that sort of southeast-to-northwest migration.
Okay. What about, now, there's a pretty significant part of the site that's going to remain undeveloped. If I read correctly, about three point eight acres, something like that? So, what do you envision doing with that part of the site that might enhance its natural characteristics? Or restore native plants, and anything along those lines? Can you talk about that some more?
Sure. I, I don't know, we, we as a building team haven't really spoken specifically about what we're going to do relative to the landscaping on the undeveloped portions of the site, but I can imagine that, you know, as mentioned, I think our intent is to try to bring as many native species back to the site as possible. And there, there's a possibility that there may be a seed mix that we would be able to try to reintroduce some of the native grasses of the area on, on the undeveloped portions of the site. But otherwise, we, we really haven't spoken about specific strategies at this point.
Okay. Has there been any, I mean, I realize you haven't gotten into these kind of specifics, probably, but any discussion about how the people in the area, the neighboring property owners, might be able to enjoy these undeveloped parts of the site? Perhaps get some educational benefit about learning about native species? Anything along those lines?
Well, I, not on, not on the undeveloped portions of the site, per se. We, we have spent a lot of time talking about the fact that, like any elementary school or middle school in a neighborhood, in a residential neighborhood, there will be fields, and there will be a playground, and there will be some of the open space that are, that, that, that the neighbors will be able to use on the weekends. And so, that certainly has been seen as an amenity insofar as the undeveloped portions of the site in terms of sort of learning about the landscape. We, we haven't, to date, had conversations specific to that subject.
And the reason I bring it up is I think restoration of native habitats is very important. And as I, I've been out to the site three times in the last two days, and one of the things I did notice is a lack of prevalence of native species on that portion, the city-owned portion, Hutchinson Park, you see more native species for some reason. I don't know why that is. I assume it was because this site was graded at some point in the past, which would have destroyed most of the yucca and other grassland species you might see in that area. I'm just, you know, at this point, I'm just saying I think it would be a good idea to look at that kind of restoration. It's something that's provided for in our comp plan. And I think there may be some way to also make that a real amenity for the people in the neighborhood as well, so.
I would agree.
I'm kind of thinking out loud at this point, so, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Coop?
This is a question from Mr. Reed, and I apologize if this goes back to the ownership topic. There was a question about a document or a meeting, or somebody said, I think it was two thousand and eight, that Jeff Coe was looking at, or getting ready to give the property to the city. Is that, am I, is that correct?
That came out of this document.
Okay.
And there's no record written or otherwise of those discussions. And the board policy that I went through earlier in the, in the initial presentation, which cited the criteria that the Board of Education has established for both declaring land surplus as well as, as actually selling it, or to either private entities or to municipalities, pretty well outlined. So, I don't know how it got in here or, or why it was put in. I mean, it was a document that went to the board. It was posted on our website, so it obviously went to the public as well. I can't tell you why that language was used.
Speculation that it was going to be deemed surplus?
Speculation could be. Generally, we do not enter into any kinds of discussions with entities regarding disposition of property without it being surplus. It's just, it's pretty clear in board policy as far as what the board's position is. So, without the land being declared surplus, then I, I think they either over-exaggerated in, in the way the language was put into this document, or, or something. I, you know, like I said, it's all speculation on my part.
Thank you.
Tom, yes, no, maybe?
I actually, sorry, I actually left out a question I was going to ask. Go ahead. Mr. Pfeifer. I apologize. I should have got to you while you were up here. One thing that wasn't raised in public testimony, but that was in some of the written comments we received, was concerns about glare from lighting on the site. Has there been any discussion so far about how that's going to be mitigated to make sure the light doesn't migrate off-site?
How, will it migrate off-site?
Well, right. In other words, how to reduce, how to prevent the lighting from becoming an issue for the residents in the neighborhood?
The simplest answer is we would use downlight exterior fixtures where, where we need them to, to prevent the upward glow, and, and it will also be mitigated by the time of day in which it will be used. And the building will be predominantly, will be closed typically in the evenings, except for the, you know, in, in the event of performances or after-hours courses or things like that. But typically, we would do it in the same way that we do it in facilities all over the place, which you all are very familiar with, with, with downlight fixtures.
Okay. Let me just make sure I don't have anything else before you sit down. There were some other references to loss-of-view corridors. Some of the, we heard some testimony about that. So, I understand you're, you're basically, the building is going to be constructed so that it fits into the grade, so to speak. Will the views be blocked from any direction?
Well, the, the views will be impacted, certainly, from, from multiple directions. But with the, I, as to whether or not they'll be blocked, I don't know that we've sort of analyzed that. I mean, the building will sit, we're, we're trying to put it on the lowest portion of, of the flatter- of the flatter portion of the property that we can. We're trying to limit its height to the greatest extent we can. However, we haven't modeled a view corridor analysis for all the surrounding properties. We have not done that sort of analysis at this point.
Okay, but that will be done at some point?
We would do, I mean, we, we will certainly have a, we will have a computer model that will allow us to, to take a look at those things, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you. I guess I should've said impaired views instead of blocked, so, all right, thank you. And can I jump over and just ask a couple of questions of Community Resources?
Of course.
Okay. Follow-up first, is that all right?
And it's not really a follow-up, it's just a comment. Unfortunately, in this situation, we're limited to how far we can get into different things in regards to design, which is unfortunate. There's been instances in the past when we dealt with plan development and ODPs where we could really try to change those things to, to tailor that, but we're not dealing with that here. We're dealing with a, just a blanket rezone to 2R, so I wanna make sure that that's kept in mind. Thanks.
Thanks. Okay, Tom?
Yeah, no, any, the questions I was asking were specifically in the context of the criteria of enhancing the natural characteristics, so that was, that was the intention. I had a couple of brief questions for Nat, Community Resources, since Mr. Williams has been sitting there all night, waiting for, waiting for someone to ask him something. Ross, I just have to ask you, have, have, has the city ever done any parks planning for this site?
The particular school site?
Yes.
The city, we have not done any plans on the school site whatsoever, and in fact, Hutchinson Park does not have any specific plan for the entire park site. There was a neighborhood participation program grant for the playground that was placed on the Hutchinson site right next, right next door, but that's the only planning we've done on these, these sites out there.
Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. Any other questions? I saw you move there. All right. All right, if no questions, I'm ready for a motion. And that would go to Council President Kellen.
Okay. I move for the adoption of ordinance O. 2012-11 on second and final reading, based on the findings of fact of the Planning Commission dated May 16th, 2012.
Second the motion?
Right, motion and a second discussion?
I'll, I'll break the ice. You know, I've, I've been at this Planning Commission, City Council, and Mayor for something like, like 18 years, and I was sitting here tonight thinking back to the, the first city council meeting I ever went to as a, as a neighborhood advocate, and it had to do with a, maybe a two and a half acre lot in the middle of my neighborhood that somebody wanted to build on. And our entire, our entire neighborhood felt it was open space because it was vacant, and we walked our dogs, we picnicked, we had bonfires, and I, I was pretty indignant. So I, I understand that, that feeling that, that we've heard so much of tonight. That, by the way, is, is the way a lot of us got into this in the first place, on the city council, city councils all over the state, all over the country, we first got into this business, usually many times because of a neighborhood advocacy issue, and that's what launched me into this back in 1993 or 1994. So I, I understand that, that point of view. I, I think that, you know, beyond a shadow of a legal doubt, this is not open space. This is privately owned land, owned by the Jefferson County School District. And that is, as I said hours ago, really the foundational question that we're dealing with. Once we establish that, that gives the applicant the, the right, the owner of the land, the right to apply for the rezoning. After that, we have to go through the criteria of, of meeting the rezoning requirements. And we have talked about traffic, we've talked in, in great detail about, about the wildlife corridor. Again, ownership and open space. We've talked about street capacities. We, we have covered all of the parameters and criteria for a rezoning. And I don't have any personal foundation for denying the rezoning. I think it meets all of the standards. And we'll be prepared, be prepared to support it.
Scott?
Sorry. Well, half the people in here aren't gonna like my decision. In all, and a lot of what I'm gonna say is gonna duplicate what the mayor said, is that all the conditions were met. Traffic, the, the habitat for the wildlife sufficiently answered, sufficiently dealt with, in my opinion. The biggest question was the ownership. You know, Lakewood owns it, Lakewood doesn't own it, Jeffco owns it, Jeffco doesn't own it. Somebody has to own it, somewhere. And the only record out there is Jeffco owning it. So I'm, I'm gonna go with that. I'm, I'm satisfied that Jeffco has the legal right to this land, so I will be supporting this rezoning as well.
Councilors Paul, Allen, and Baraway.
Thank you. This process is probably the toughest, not probably, it's the toughest thing that we deal with as a elected body. At the end of the day, you're my neighbors, I live in your neighborhood, we interact together, and the fact that I can't talk to you throughout this whole process about what's gonna happen and how you feel is tough. But I guarantee you, I've read every bit, every correspondence that I've received from my folks, and I feel for you, I understand. I've been to the site, I hiked Green Mountain the other day, when you look down Green Mountain, you can see how it follows all the way down. And as it follows all the way down, you can also see their schools on both sides in different places along, along the way. There's a lot of emotion here tonight, from both sides. I feel for both. We had great testimony from kids on both sides, people who have family, who serve in the military and are looking to come home. It hurts. But our task tonight is not to look at that, we have to separate all the emotion. We have to look at the facts. And the scope of what we're tasked with tonight is the ownership, Jefferson County Public Schools, and 2R Small Lot Residential District. It says schools, it says churches, community buildings, says everything that makes our community and our neighborhoods what they are. So, I'm gonna have to support this. I feel comfortable supporting it. When I first found out what was going on, I, I was pretty uneasy, as I got more into the process and understood, felt much more comfortable, and I'd like to thank everybody who was involved on both sides. And I hope that they continue to, to try to work together and make this the best situation for all. So thank you.
Councilor Allen?
Not an easy decision to make. I, when Tom first got elected, we had a rezoning that came through, and, and we, we voted differently on the issue, and I, he was really disturbed. And I said, you know what, here's the thing about rezonings, I, I wish it were black and white, I wish it were very easy to make that decision, but it, it's not. It typically is a gray area. You typically have people who love the project, and you typically have people who hate the project. But a lot of things in our city, whether you look at Belmar, or Solterra, or a light rail line, or a hospital, if we would've let people's passions sway us and not the facts, we would have a lot of good projects that wouldn't have happened in Lakewood. I know people criticize the quasi-judicial process, but I, I can see why this happens. If I were at a fundraiser and was chatting up this case with the, the school, school board members or the superintendent I ran into, that wouldn't be very fair to the people that were coming to the table. If I had chatted with my neighborhoods at our ward meetings, once again, it wouldn't have been fair to the other party. So I can see why we do it this way, and why we have a very narrow scope of what we need to look at. Wildlife, open space, people think, people are very passionate about it, schools, people are very passionate about it. But our job is to look at the facts, and for me, there were two big questions. The first is, is this really Jeffco's property? I gotta tell you, this, once again, to me, it's a gray area because, quite frankly, both the county and, well, all three, the county, the schools, and the city have screwed things up on various levels, whether it be signage, or deeds, or ODPs, or taxes, so on and so forth. However, taking all of that into account, and listening to various lawyers, the fact still remains that this is Jeffco's school's property. Do I feel 100% confident of that? No, but I feel 85% confident that if we went to court, we'd lose. So, it's part of our job to use our tax dollars wisely, and I know some people have come up and thought, oh, there's some kind of sway there. You know, I, I work for the city of Lakewood, I'm proud to do it. I help with, with not only our open spaces that we establish and the things that we build, but schools as well. So, there's gonna be people that are unhappy with this decision, one way or the other. However, you should know that the people that are making the decision really are just trying to do what's best for our, our community as a whole, and, which is hard, when, you know, this is my ward, these are people who helped me with my campaign, who I know and talk to, so it's not easy to make these kind of decisions. However, it came down to two questions. Whose property is it? And the bottom line is, I think it's pretty much Jefferson County Schools. And then that just brought to the question of, is this a reasonable project for this lot of land? Considering it's already zoned as a school, I don't think this is a big leap. Is it gonna impact this neighborhood? Absolutely. You're losing 30% of a chunk of land that you thought was open space, you're gonna have a 30% more impact on your traffic. So I don't sit here and think that I think, oh, this is no big deal. There absolutely is an impact on your neighborhood if this passes. However, the question still remains is, is this reasonable use of this land taking into account that this is this owner? So I'm, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to vote yes, 'cause I, I do think it's a reasonable use of this land, given the ownership and all the testimony that we've heard today. So, my apologies now, 'cause, like I said, in these kind of decisions, unfortunately, it's not black and white, and unfortunately, you're gonna make a big chunk of people unhappy, no matter what your decision is. But that's kind of where things fell for me tonight. Thanks.
Diana, if I may just clarify something you said in the middle of your remarks, and you were talking about the ownership and going to court, I mean, and again, for the record, you said, if, if we went to court, there's an 85% chance we would lose.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed, well.
In other, if we went to court to try to claim the land?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Councilor Baraway?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to be as brief as I can. The question for me came down to ownership of the land after the concerns that were raised by the citizens around 2090 South Wright Street. I used to live off of Wright and Jewell, by the way. And to me, that was an area where I would walk my dog back, back in the day. And I think some, there was some semantics involved here, where people called this "our open space," or called it "park land." And there's a difference between the two, and there's also, especially when you say "our open space," now by "our," I hope you mean "public." That means the entire public, and not just the people who happen to live right next door to it. It's everybody in Lakewood would have the opportunity to enjoy that particular space. But the ownership of that property, for me, is pretty clear, when the only recorded deed that we have to the, to the land, to that title for that land, with the Jefferson County Assessor's Office, or the Jefferson County Clerk's Office, belongs to the Jefferson County Public School District. So as the owner of the land, they came in for this request to rezon the property, so that there may be an opportunity for the Rocky Mountain Deaf School to be able to build a new facility, a gold LEED certified facility, that may potentially be the bright spot in the nation for the deaf school, and the, I'm sorry, the deaf and the hard-to-hearing population. I think that is a feather in our bonnet in, in the city of Lakewood. I mean, that would be something we should be proud to have in the city of Lakewood. So rather than having another elementary school being built there, we're gonna have something that's state-of-the-art. And I hope that this comes, comes to fruition, because once, if this passes, I hope that the sale can go through, and that construction will take place. I will be, as you can probably tell, in favor, because I believe in the ownership of the property, and I believe that we have fairly looked at all the issues involved, and that we've met the requirements to do a rezoning. Thank you.
Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the many people who have emailed me, and for those of you who have come tonight to testify regarding this extremely important zoning issue. For all the right reasons, honest, decent people have given their time and input, not only to tonight, but for quite some time. All of you are hopeful for a particular outcome. I have thoughtfully read the many pages of documentation, and all the emails I've received. You've done your homework. All were written in an articulate format. This is my first land issue since joining the council, and I am only but one of 11 votes. Since this is a quasi-judicial matter, there has been no previous discussion among council. I can honestly say, we have strictly abided by that code of conduct. This code has been meticulously followed by all of us. Perhaps I am naive. Personally, I would have appreciated the opportunity to discuss this issue with my fellow counselors in order to better understand what to ask and look for. On a personal note, I have a strong understanding of the need for deaf children. I want you to live and, and excel in all that you do. I want these children to have every opportunity to learn in the right environment and benefit from the latest technology. I happen to be deaf in one ear. Government and the democratic process not only reflects justice, but it should reflect fairness. I have, of course, taken note that this rezoning proposal passed, passed the Planning Commission unanimously. I have a personal filter that I use prior to my vote. The first thing is, do no harm. The second thing is, to examine all sides of an issue thoroughly with open and unbiased eyes. And the last is to treat others the way I want to be treated. I've visited the site personally, and appreciate the unique quality of the area. I believe that honest, that an honest attempt at due diligence was done by the city of Lakewood, the Rocky Mountain School of Deaf, and the school district. However, there has been so much confusion, that I will be voting no.
Uh, Councilor Quinn?
Thank you, Mayor Murphy. Now, I have to say, I've gone back and forth at least a dozen times tonight on how I was gonna vote on this, and just made up my mind in the last few minutes. When it comes down to the question of land ownership, if there was one shred of doubt in my mind as to whether or not Jeffco Public Schools owned this land, I would vote no immediately. But I don't have any doubt. The legal explanation we've been provided by Mr. Cox, our attorney, and outside counsel, has more than satisfied the issue of land ownership in my mind. I am gonna vote yes on this. There definitely were some problems here at the posting of those signs was a mistake. I don't know why that happened exactly, but that should not have been done. And we should be very careful about the expectations that we create. And this, I, I hope, will be an opportunity to make sure that those mistakes are not made again in the future. Because when you create that perception, and, and I've been in ex-
Because when you create that perception, and, and I've been in exactly the same position as a lot of the people in this audience. I've been in exactly that same spot before. I think this does meet the criteria for rezoning, based on the assumption that the, the school district owns the land and has the right to, to transfer it. But I wanna make a point to the folks from the Rocky Mountain Deaf School about this land. You need to be sensitive to everything that has happened here in your development of this property, and sensitive to the concerns of your neighbors. And you've made those commitments, and I think that you will follow through on them. But keep in mind that your neighbors have expectations based on what's happened in the past. And, and also, from my own perspective, I think that all land is sacred and is held in trust for all the people. All living things depend on land for survival. Animals, birds, insects, everything depends on, on the land. And please be sensitive to that in your site design. As a matter of fact, I, I would ask you, implore you to go above and beyond what's required. The only other thing I wanted to address was the performance-based review process. And we have two different versions of whether or not it was followed. It seems to me that it was, but of course, I understand there's a difference of opinion on that. With that, I, I will be voting yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councillor Wickman?
Let me start off by saying, uh, one thing that's really great about this whole process is I got to learn about the existence of the school. Uh, it's a great school, and I just kinda wish it'd been around fifty, sixty years, or eighty years ago. Um, on a personal note, uh, my, my mother was hard of hearing, and like Beethoven, she was in a situation where she loved music, she was a music teacher, and then as the years went by, she, she lost, lost her hearing. So, like I say, I wish she had been around, you know, for, for, for her, back in her day. But, um, and if this were a referendum about the, the school, um, you know, this would be a slam dunk. But as, as, um, Councillor Cox pointed out, um, this is not about the appellant, or the, the applicant. This is not about the school, um, it's not about the, the personalities involved. It's about the, the rezoning. And so, I have to focus on, the question is, is a 2R zoning better than the current zoning? Because the requirement is that we need to promote the welfare of the people of Lakewood. And so, I have to ask myself, to the people of Lakewood, is a 2R zoning better than the, than the current zoning? And that's, that's important, because everything that's been said today is not legally binding. All the plans that are made, none of that's legally binding. The only thing that's legally binding when this is all said and done is that zoning. And so, the question I have to ask myself is, 2R zoning better than the current zoning? Because if I'm gonna be promoting the welfare of, of the community, it has to be an improvement. If it's not an improvement, then I'm not promoting the welfare of the community. So, as a result, I'm, I'm afraid I'm gonna have to vote no.
Anyone else? If, uh, absent any other comments, please cast your votes. Tom? Uh, the motion passes eight to three. That is a supermajority. The property is rezoned. The, the naval votes were Councillors Royble, Johnson, and Wickman. This has been a grueling and arduous process for everybody involved. I echo the thanks of many of my fellow council members to everyone. We understand how difficult this process and this decision is. But the, both the Planning Commission and the City Council have spoken. Thank you very much. Uh, any general business?
None, thank you.
Executive report? Mayor and council reports?
No report for me.
I say we forego those. Given the time. Is there anything important?
No. Raimi?
Mayor Murphy, um, I believe that all of us are one, and in our own way, if all of us could just take a moment of silence for our friends that are enduring these terrible fires, I think that would be good.
Thank you. Thank you. We are adjourned.